Okay. That's so, that's so true. Okay. Well, I'm gonna ask them not to repeat and we'll see how that goes. Yeah. Yes, before they get some of those, yes. Yeah, absolutely, that would change. I agree. I agree. That's why we have that stuff. So yeah, and I'm gonna explain a lot more than we have in the past for that reason. So, I don't wanna stifle anything, anybody from here, fair, but we also have lives to live, so. I know, I know. I know. Where are the two blue socks? Supposed to be here. Where are they? Okay, good. Okay. Okay. It's well past six. You wanna start? All right. Welcome to the Planning Commission meeting for August twenty-second seventh. And what a beautiful group of people. Thank you for all being here and I mean that sincerely. Go ahead and join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Good evening on behalf of the Planning Commission and my fellow commissioners. Obviously, we have a very full room. We do have overflow back into my right. And we are gonna allow everyone to speak. We're gonna go for decorum, professionalism, and only one person speaking at a time. It'll help us all get through tonight's meeting and it'll allow for everyone to be heard. Deal? Thank you. All right. For those that wish to speak tonight, would you please stand? If you're not sure, please stand. If you think you might want to, please stand. Right if you would raise your right hand. Do you solemnly swear to tell the truth to your best of your ability? Thank you.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
Can we call roll, please?
Yes.
Commissioner Ferguson.
Here.
Commissioner Nesbit.
There.
Commissioner O'Neill.
Present.
Commissioner Torres.
Here.
Commissioner Young.
Here.
Commissioner Ashbaugh.
Present.
And Chairman Wiley.
Here. All right, the first item on the agenda.
Chair.
Yes.
I'd like to motion we approve the consent agenda.
Right.
My second.
We have first and a second. Any discussion? All right, let's have the vote.
Commissioner Ferguson.
Yes.
Commissioner Nesbit.
Yes.
Commissioner O'Neill.
Yes.
Commissioner Torres.
Yes.
Commissioner Young.
Yes.
Commissioner Ashbaugh.
Yes.
And Chairman Wiley.
Yes. The motion passes. All right, the first public hearing. The first item on the public hearing tonight is case number two-four-one-seven-five-dash-zero-seven, a UDO amendment number seventy for the Inglewood Arts Overlay District. Staff, you have a presentation?
So Madam Chair, so I would like to take, so my presentation is gonna cover the two public hearings tonight that cover both the UDO amendment as well as the rezoning to put in place the overlay district.
So your presentation will be one, but we will vote on the motion separately?
That is correct, yes.
All right, thank you.
So, this is UDO amendment number seventy, as well as the rezoning to enact the Inglewood Arts Overlay District. So, little bit of background, what is a?
Can we get his name, please? Who is this? He did not introduce himself.
Okay, Jesse, there is, Tom's not on screen.
The screens are not, the screens are not on here, back here.
We will wait while we have tech.
Hey, Tom, is your mic on?
The screens are not on back here, like we can see it.
I know, we're trying to fix that. Is your, your mic on, Tom?
Yes.
Talk more into it, they're having trouble.
If you guys need to, your microphones will come out here.
What'd you do?
Yeah. Okay, thank you. Absolutely. Okay.
Hey, Bush.
Yeah.
You need to let me respond to the crowd and not you. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, are we set to go?
We are set to go.
All right, continue.
So, okay, so what is a overlay district? It's a, it's a planning tool that's used to create a zoning layer that goes over the top of the base zoning. Thus, it's called an overlay zoning district. These are typically used to supplement or supersede the underlying base zoning districts. A lot of times, overlay districts share one zoning boundary or can cross multiple, but they are used by cities throughout the United States. So tonight, we have the Inglewood Arts Overlay District. The purpose of this district is to promote a robust and sustainable mixed-income neighborhood. They want a neighborhood that's safe, walkable, and includes a mixture of densities and design to encourage interaction amongst neighbors. So this overlay district focuses on.
I'm gonna ask everyone to please be silent while one person is speaking. Everything that you say is recorded or needs to be recorded. And if you're not at the mic, you do not have permission to speak. So we wanna make sure everything is captured. Thank you. Continue.
So this overlay district has a focus on housing. It introduces two concepts to encourage revitalization of neighborhoods, but also to promote infill housing. I say they are new concepts, they're new concepts to Independence. They are not new concepts to the KC Metro and across the United States. That includes accessory dwelling units, also known as ADUs, and cottage neighborhood cluster. Some other components of the Inglewood Arts Overlay District is limiting those negative uses, such as payday loans, pawn shops, tow, tow lots, things like that, within their neighborhoods. So what is an accessory dwelling unit? It's a small secondary house that's located on a lot that has a larger primary single-family home on it, commonly known as granny flats, carriage houses, backyard cottage, among many other things. ADUs, when used, they have the potential to increase housing affordability. They create wider range of housing options and they can enable seniors to stay near family as they age in place. As mentioned before, many cities and counties have utilized ADUs already in their zoning ordinances. So I mentioned a little bit about ADUs. We have over twenty-two municipalities in the, in the Kansas City region that have ADU ordinances. These are local jurisdictions to counties. They're on both the Missouri and Kansas side. We evaluated those, those regulations. All of those ordinances allow ADUs in certain zoning districts subject to certain requirements. When you compare the ADU restrictions to these other municipalities, they're very, very consistent. This slide here outlines the restrictions for, for ADU. I'm not gonna go through all of them, but, but a couple key points to point out is ADUs are, are permitted on lots with a single-family residence and with residential zoning. So you cannot have a ADU in the backyard of a commercial establishment. These regulations do require off-street parking. It prohibits the sale of a ADU separately from the single-family house. It also requires that the, that the owner live on the property. So that's either in the primary residence or in the, the ADU. So it's bringing ownership back to the neighborhoods. So why allow ADUs in this Inglewood Arts Overlay District? As mentioned before, it's a housing strategy that aims to create additional affordable housing units. It also can increase property val, property values and can provide supplemental income for property owners. ADUs build on the traditional development. Most of what you see in the Inglewood neighborhoods, single-family homes with lots, detached garages, things like that. ADUs promote livable communities. It provides convenient living arrangements for multi-generational and multi-generational housing options. Again, it promotes intergenerational wealth. It can enable people to age in place. It's an increase in affordable housing and it can expand the local property tax base. The other concept that is introduced in this overlay district is what's called a cottage neighborhood cluster. Again, this is not a new concept, it's new to in, to Independence. And what this is, is it's a planned community of up to, of anywhere from three to twelve smaller residences, often around common open space and private open space. And up on the screen, you, you have a, a drawing of what one of these could potentially look like. So what's the purpose of a cottage neighborhood cluster? Again, going back to encouraging that stronger sense of community, promoting that variety of housing choices, balance population growth with using land more efficiently. It encourages affordability, innovation, and variety of housing types. And it tries to maximize the resident and pedestrian-oriented outdoor spaces. So why do we want to allow cottage neighborhood cluster? This type of housing fits the character of the area, but it is also supported by many of the housing needs and strategies and various plans going all the way back to nineteen ninety-three, starting with our ninety-three comp plan, the Twenty-four Highway Corridor Plan that was approved in two thousand and five, the citywide housing study that was completed in two thousand and twenty-two, our current comprehensive plan that was approved in two thousand and eighteen. This type of development in the right location can, can encourage redevelopment of vacant and underutilized sites. It promotes infill development, again, where appropriate. It maximizes existing infrastructure, promotes a range of housing options, and it gets that reinvestment back into na, into neighborhoods. One thing I would like to point out is that this cottage neighborhood cluster does require a public hearing and approval of a development plan. So there is that community engagement before any one of these would be developed. Gonna switch gears a little bit and talk a little bit about our, our prior planning efforts. Again, we've done a lot of plans and studies that have looked at revitalizing the western neighborhoods of, of Independence. All of these plans through the years have talked about protecting and enhancing the viability, livability, and affordability of these neighborhoods. And it's, and it's, and they all talk about support infill development and ways to do that is through flexible zoning and overlay zones. I'll kinda go through this pretty quick, 'cause I kinda covered this before. But again, the nineteen ninety-three comp plan talked about maximize the range of housing types, sizes, and costs for our current and future residents. The Twenty-four Highway Corridor Plan talks about a framework for investment in this corridor includes an infill strategy and overlay zones to encourage new housing, construction, and products. More recently, the two thousand and twenty-two citywide housing study, a couple of recommendations that came out of that, create policies that support infill development, such as accessory dwelling units, and continue efforts to promote neighborhood stability. Switching gears again, grassroots. This really is a grassroots effort that started prior to two thousand and eleven when the, when Inglewood, when the Inglewood businesses were rezoned to the arts district. After the arts district was, was put in place, they continued to, to work to strengthen their, their neighborhood around the Inglewood area. They formed the Inglewood CID, they attracted new businesses, they established Inglewood Arts as a nonprofit, they purchased and rehabbed the former comprehensive mental health building into the Inglewood Arts Center. They weren't done there. In two thousand and nineteen, the same group, again at grassroots level, mapped the housing conditions of all of the residences in this area. And they rated them on a scale of poor to good. They held numerous community and. They held numerous community and neighborhood meetings to discuss housing and ways to revitalize their neighborhoods. Thus, you have the Inglewood Arts Overlay District. Switching gears to the rezoning. What is the character of this area? Mostly, it's residential. The predominant is a single-family home. There's some commercial and industrial zoning along 23rd Street and Truman Road. Most of this area was annexed into the city in 1948, but the bulk of the housing was built in the 1950s and before. These homes generally consist of small, two- and three-bedroom houses. You do have the scattered low-density multifamily kind of mixed in those neighborhoods. This is the map of the area. Again, looking at that screen, Truman Road is to the north, to the top. 23rd Street is to the south. To the east, you have Crissler Lexington, and it jogs back over to Crissler. On the west, you have Arlington, 18th Street. But in the middle, you see the Inglewood Arts District. That was the initial grassroots effort. So this rezoning meets the city's strategic plan that calls for encouraging infill housing in neighborhoods and collaborating with community partners on various methods to stabilize neighborhoods. It also meets several of the land use principles in our current comprehensive plan that talks about fostering redevelopment within the city to revitalize unused and underused properties. With all of that said, staff recommends approval of the UDO amendment and the rezoning. This meets several of the recommendations identified in prior plans and studies, talking about overlay districts to encourage redevelopment, promoting infill development, to promote redevelopment that maximizes existing infrastructure, but also promote that range of housing options. I do have one change to the UDO that I would like to point out. In November of 2023, the City Council passed a UDO amendment concerning auto-related uses. It updated our regulations to used car lots, auto repair, both light and heavy. And it was pointed out after the packet had gone out that mistakenly, the overlay district had prohibited those uses. The intention was to follow the base zoning and the rules and regulations that are currently in the UDO. So I have those, and I can pass those out to the commission tonight. But that concludes my presentation, and I'm available for any questions.
All right, you want to go ahead and hand those out? And would you like a motion on that amendment? Adding that amendment?
Yes.
Right, do you have a motion once we look at this amendment? So Tom, on this amendment, to clarify, we're not prohibiting in the overlay, in the UDO. We're simply going to follow what has already been decided about the number of auto-related businesses?
So this amendment would follow base zoning districts. So what that means is wherever those uses are allowed under the base zoning district, that's the rules that they would have to follow.
And what are the base, and what are the base zoning districts that they are allowed?
In the commercial districts, it's C2 and C3. And give me just a second, and I'll get you the information on industrial districts. So within the industrial districts, it is allowed in I1?
Thanks.
All right, commissioners, any questions for staff?
Chair.
Commissioner?
On your report, you said minimum setbacks from property lines. Is that, what's that length? I mean, you didn't put down no feet or anything? And you got minimum separation from primary residence? You don't have any numbers? I mean, it's whatever the people want? I mean, what's our requirements?
So the minimum side setback is five feet. That matches our base zoning districts. What was your, what was it?
What's the primary residence? What's the minimum separation from the residence?
10 feet.
So 10 feet from the residence, 5 feet? Okay. I mean, it's not in our packet, so I didn't know what that was. Another question I had is, I see no numbers. What kind of numbers are we looking at, price-wise, to build these little UDAs, whatever? So ADUs, I mean. So what are the numbers on? Have we looked into that or anything?
So we did a lot of research into ADUs. Again, it's going to, the cost of these is going to vary depending on size, construction material, how much you add the gingerbread to, is what I'll call it. But I think who would be better to answer that is if we hold that question for the applicant in their presentation to address that.
Okay. You're asking us to add this amendment that there's no words on here. So I don't know what we're amending on this piece of paper, you sent me.
So what the change is, and I apologize for not making that clear. So what was passed out on that sheet? There are three cells that are in the use table, and they are highlighted in yellow. The version that is in your packet had a dash that indicated that those three uses were prohibited. So the change is to remove that dash and a blank square in the overlay district's use table means that it follows the base zoning district.
Okay, what page is that on?
So that is the change.
What page is that on? Is it in the UDO one or in the overlay district?
It's on page three of mine.
Page three of mine.
Other commissioners, any other questions?
I have a question.
Yes, sir.
You made a statement that the ADU will bring ownership back when you would have to be an owner in the first place in order to build an ADU.
Correct.
So how is that, by your definition, bringing ownership back to something that already owns something?
What we have seen in these neighborhoods over the last several years is investment firms coming in and purchasing up these single-family homes and renting them. This ADU is an option that if anybody wants to take advantage of that, they have to, it has to be an owner-occupied property.
So you're going to force a United States owner to move to Kansas City in order to live in a property that they own already?
It's not forcing anything.
If they want to build an ADU, it would be forced.
Correct, yes.
Right, any other questions, commissioners?
I got another question.
All right, go ahead, Commissioner.
So an ADU building, you're saying people right now can't build an ADU, like a garage in their backyard already, with getting a permit and all that?
They can build a garage, but you cannot live in that garage.
Okay. So you're saying that's the only difference is ADU they can live in, garage they can't?
That is correct, yes.
Okay, thank you.
All right, are we ready to bring the applicant up? All right, thank you, staff. Would the applicant's representative please state your name and your address for the record?
Good evening. My name is Bill Moore, and I'm an attorney with White Goss Law Firm in Kansas City, Missouri, located at 4510 Bellevue Avenue. I'm here to speak tonight on behalf of the applicant. The applicant has members of Inglewood Arts that will make the bulk of the presentation. I think as a kind of a housekeeping item to begin with, what I'd like to do is hand out to you letters of support from citizens within the city of Independence.
All right, go ahead.
All right, so first, thanks to Tom Scannell for the excellent presentation regarding the proposal that is in front of you this evening. The applicant, Inglewood Arts, is a not-for-profit entity dedicated to creating space for artists and members of the arts community. Several years ago, Inglewood Arts began a dialogue with members of the community to talk about what could be done to improve and enhance the environment within the Inglewood area. The sense of the community was there was a need to provide for improvements for housing, for homeownership, and for rental for individuals who are in need of housing. One of the reasons why Inglewood Arts got involved in this process to begin with was because of the significant progress that had already been made in the Inglewood area. For example, the Independence School District annexed that portion of the Kansas City School District that was located in the city limits into the Independence School District. Progress. Inglewood Arts, our Inglewood business community decided to form a community improvement district to impose, self-impose, a one-cent sales tax for the purposes of improving and enhancing the Inglewood Business District. Progress. So now, those discussions that we mentioned earlier started to gel. And out of those discussions, with members of the community, members of the City Council, members of the planning staff, came the proposal that's here before you this evening, the Inglewood Overlay District. So you're going to hear tonight from representatives of Inglewood Arts explaining the goals and objectives of the initiative. This is an initiative to restore property rights to owners of property within the Inglewood area so that individuals living in the Inglewood area can take advantage of these restored property rights to improve their own lives, to improve lives of friends and family, and to make Inglewood ultimately a better place to live. So with that, I'd like to turn it over to Michael Baxley to begin the presentation.
All right, thank you, Bill. Mr. Moore.
Commissioners, thank you for having us. My name is Michael Baxley. I'm the Executive Director of Inglewood Arts. I'm not going to spend a lot of time going back through the slides, because...
Can you please give your address?
Oh, yeah, 10901 East Winter Road.
Thank you.
And so the map that we've already covered, the red area represents the business district, and the green area represents the proposed overlay. Just, what we're going to do today is give a little bit of background of how we got here, what this is about, and then ultimately, what it's not about. So first, I want to talk about how this kind of started and where it came from. And I'm going to turn it over to Tammy Parsons next to give a little bit of history and background. But it started with a grassroots effort of community members kind of getting a baseline for the area, walking the neighborhoods, having community meetings, reaching out to neighbors and saying, let's get together. And most of those folks are in this room tonight. And so walking the neighborhood, they learned that there were over 150 vacant lots, and that was alarming. And how do we solve this problem? They noticed that, after doing a survey, about 49% of the homes were rental. And a lot of those folks, that when we pulled records of ownership of who owned the lots, they're owned by folks that don't even live in the state of Missouri. And so the question was, how do we improve this? And knowing that there's only been a few new home builds in the last 40 years, most of them by nonprofits like Habitat for Humanity, the question was, how can we improve this area? So what we're going to present to you today is that accumulation of years of thinking from community members. And I want to turn it over to Tammy Parsons, who is a resident and part of this, that started a group called Grow Grassroots of Independence that ultimately became Inglewood Arts, the nonprofit. So Tammy, if you don't mind sharing your story.
Thank you so much. Tammy Parsons, 11100 East Winter Road. I want to say thank you to the planning commissioners and the chair. I would also like to acknowledge my gratitude and the inspiration for all the community members who showed up and who have been involved. To serve your community is not a requirement, it's a choice. Lastly, much thanks to our city leaders who have made themselves accessible to answer our thousands of questions. I am here this evening to share my support and ask for your support in the work that has been happening in our community. I believe this grassroots effort will bring opportunities to improve our community and create community pride. When I came to Inglewood 24 years ago, it was recommended to me that I try this little cafe in town that had the best breakfast. You might know of it, the Inglewood Cafe. Long story short, is I saw an opportunity in a vacant, boarded-up property. I felt that with a little love, my investment of ownership would be better than any rental situation. Unexpectedly, what I gained was I gained a community. Not only did the people welcome and celebrate new life coming into where they live, they inspired me to join them in making a difference. For 24 years, my family has been a part of a grassroots group in the Inglewood neighborhood, joining folks who were born and raised here in the Inglewood area, folks that were tired of nothing happening in our area, our friends that didn't want to wait on something to happen. They wanted to make it happen. Here are a few things that we have been involved with since 2000. When I first came into Inglewood, they were finishing putting in the streetlights in the parkway, which took all the overhead wires and put it underneath. It made our community better. The next thing I found myself involved with was the Truman-Maywood Corridor, same grassroots group. They just continued to find things to do. The repairs with the stone bridge on our Truman Gateway, that was all part of this grassroots group that they just, again, kept finding things that needed love in our community. The destination of becoming the Inglewood Arts District, changing the Independence School District and becoming a community improvement district. In 2018, Grow, known as the Grassroots of Western Independence, was named. And we started with a vision of an overlay and to be a part of building a better block. Inglewood Arts... Inglewood Arts Center was the most blighted building in Inglewood, and now it is home to the Inglewood Arts Center. The Grow Group continued to celebrate our victories, yet we were still need driven. We noticed in our aging community, we were losing homes, homes that were not being replaced, resulting in a plethora of vacant lots. Our rental, our rental over homeownership was at forty-nine percent with mainly out-of-town owners. These two findings we know lead to decline and they lead to crime. This was not okay and it still isn't. We need to stop the blight, not enable it. Our Inglewood Arts Overlay is a tool for our community. The Grow Group, we met weekly, sometimes with few and sometimes with many, but we never stopped meeting. Learning from our community as to what they were seeing and what their needs were, also what the community said that they wanted. It's a plan to help, not regress. Our community deserves this support, it's where we live, it's our job to love it. The Inglewood Arts Overlay District is a community-driven plan created by the grassroots community members. I appreciate all of your time and I value the good in this community. I would like to introduce you to Teresa Dorsh to give you some key points.
Thank you. Good evening, Planning Commission and Chair. I, Teresa Dorsh, live at eighteen seventeen South Ralston Avenue in Inglewood, and I would like to share three benefits of the overlay and how it does fit within the Inglewood area. Those three things are smaller home builds, auxiliary dwelling units, and cottage neighborhoods. Smaller home builds, so the Inglewood area has many vacant lots and has lost population over time. We all know that if we drive through the neighborhood, we see those vacant lots. The nation has been experiencing a housing crisis and the cost of homes have shot up significantly. Folks are looking for smaller homes, including myself, because they are more affordable and efficient. Smaller homes are a great fit for the Inglewood area. I feel one of the wonderful characteristics of this neighborhood I live in is the variety of homes from large to very small. This is something I have always loved about Inglewood. As mentioned before, this area has numerous vacant lots, some of them are very, very small. So being able to build smaller homes on smaller lots again makes sense. It would allow new homes to be built on these vacant lots, which then can create accessible housing opportunities for folks, which in turn will bring people back into our neighborhood that is losing population, all along fitting the character of what is already here. Another opportunity is ADUs. Another national concern is the cost of senior housing. Many seniors would like to stay where they live and continue to be part of their community. ADUs can help with this. This isn't a new concept. Most have heard of granny flats or mother-in-law quarters, and these can already be found in quite a few places in Inglewood. Also, as mentioned before, in Inglewood, there is a general concern about the large number of out-of-town investors who rent out. It is important to note that the owner would be required to live in either the primary residence or the ADU. Also, if the owner sells, the new owner would need to live in one or the other, which then stops an out-of-town investor from getting it, organically moving the needle in a different direction. Also, ADUs are not allowed to be Airbnbs. The third item is a cottage neighborhood. This is a model or example of what can be done to bring in gentle density on a large piece of land. Nationally, as populations continue to grow in cities, the suburbs and other areas are now getting hit with larger multi-unit complexes. Inglewood has some larger vacant lots, but through our meetings and feedback, we heard our community would prefer to not have large complexes built on our neighborhood streets. A cottage neighborhood is an example of what can be done instead of that. It also allows for folks to live in affordable, smaller homes, be part of a community that we love, while fitting the characteristic of an existing neighborhood, Inglewood. A cottage neighborhood built in Inglewood, as Tom mentioned, would be required to go through an additional approval process. In short, these are benefits that fit well in the Inglewood area. It matches a lot of what is already there and can bring back a positive energy into our community. And with that, I'm going to hand it off to Michael Baxley.
Thanks Teresa. Well, we'll wrap this up just to reiterate the things that it does to. And you know, this puts the freedom back to the homeowner, so if you want more freedom with your property to choose how you want to build, this puts it back. By not having this, it actually leaves more intervention and gives you less freedom to do with your property as you please. So what this does is it does allow for new smaller homes to be built under a thousand square feet or under nine hundred square feet. It does allow for auxiliary dwelling units, and it does allow for cottage communities. And so it just gives opportunity. You can choose to do nothing, and as a homeowner, I think many people will, some will choose to take advantage of it, some will do nothing. So the day should this pass, the day after, nothing's going to change, it just gives people the option to exercise this should they want to. And I'm going to need a backup. There we go. And so just to also reiterate, because the, we did do a lot of outreach to the community, and we got a lot of calls. It was great because we, on day, after the mailer went out, we received over ninety calls the first day, coming in every three to five minutes. We had folks returning those calls and answering questions. But some of the questions and concerns was that they would have the right to protest other zoning in the future. This does not remove your right to protest zoning in the future. It does not force you out of your home. It does not require you to do anything to your property, you can sit and do just as you are, and you do not have to build an ADU. And it has no connection to taxes. So should this pass, it doesn't increase your taxes, there's no tie to taxes, this is a land use document, not a tax document. And then lastly, it's not an HOA. So a lot of folks were concerned that this would be some sort of overarching document like an HOA, and it is certainly not that. So we just wanted to be clear about the things it's not. We thank you for your consideration today and understanding that how this could be a really good thing for independence, and we're excited and hope you all will support this. Thank you.
All right, would you please remain there?
Yes.
All right, Commissioners, I'll entertain questions of the applicant, the applicants, designated speakers.
Chair.
Yes, sir.
Okay, you guys, how many different districts are in this area? Can you name them all?
Different districts, official districts?
Yes.
Tom?
Neighborhood districts.
Yeah, I'll defer to Tom Skinnell for that.
Well, you guys should know, because you guys want to do the overlays, you should know what district you're in.
Sure, and that's why we have a team, and so Tom's part of the team.
Okay.
Thank you.
Just a point of clarification, is your question the different zoning districts?
Yes, the, no, not zoning, neighborhood districts. You got the Inglewood, you got the Maywood, what other ones you got?
So you mean neighborhoods?
Yeah, neighborhood.
So there's, off the top of my head, there's some that it would be Maywood, Bristol, Inglewood, and that's just a few off the top of my head.
Well, you kept saying Inglewood, you didn't say any of these other ones, you just kept saying Inglewood.
So I said the Inglewood area, which I'm referring to the overlay boundaries, so...
Overlay boundaries, okay. Because when you guys brought this before us, well, what, a year ago, a year and a half ago? We asked you guys to make it smaller.
And we have.
By how much?
I would say about four hundred to five hundred properties.
I would say not, so let's go back and try that again.
Okay.
Maybe you should tell us how many...
I'm not going to tell you, you guys need to know exactly what you're dealing with here. You got four thousand homes here, and you guys want to do something to them.
We redress back to the boundaries you asked for.
Yeah, but, no, we didn't set the boundaries.
So it wasn't about a number of homes, it was about the boundaries.
We just asked you to reduce it, it's a nice idea, it's a good idea, but let's start small, let's don't take a third of Independence to do it, let's start small before you go do this. That's what I understand, when we ask you to do that, why didn't you do that?
Okay, so we, hey, we will not have shouting or clapping, we want to keep time to a minimum, but we also want everyone to be heard.
Okay, so...
I'm going to refer to Tom in this. Can you address the amount of space that is now considered the Inglewood Arts and with this overlay district? I know you gave the boundaries from streets. Can you give properties?
So this has, the boundaries have reduced. If you recall, a year ago, so it was August of last year, the boundaries extended all the way over to the square. In the current proposal, the boundaries, the eastern boundaries follow Chrisler, Lexington kind of jogs over, but generally follows that Chrisler line is that east boundary, so it's, they have pulled it back away from the square.
Madam Chair.
And I would like to also, because I still feel like your question hasn't been addressed completely, so I would like to answer to the fact that the size of the overlay was determined by quite a few community meetings. We had folks asking to be a part of this, because again, it's not, it's not creating restrictions, it's creating opportunities. So we listened to that and added some areas in, and I'll be quite honest, when we restricted it back down, we had some folks that were very upset because they were excited about the overlay district. Also, it gives some clear-cut boundaries, so it's Truman to Twenty-third to Chrisler to Brookside. So for the ease of the overlay district, that's, that's how that was determined.
All right, thank you.
Chair.
I believe Eric had a question first.
Well, you sort of answered my question. When you're trying new things and you make it this big, you can see kind of what it does. Why was there not given any, it doesn't seem like there was any consideration given to making it a smaller district and having it be a test area first. Can you just answer, why, why did you not do that, why'd you choose to go this way?
Sure, so it does kind of go back to the original comment. We did talk about a smaller district, but in the community meetings we had, people were very interested and excited about the overlay district and liked the fact that it didn't restrict, but just gave opportunities to homeowners. So the thought process was, it really, as Michael shared, doesn't change a whole lot. You can choose to not do anything with this overlay, it's not going to affect you, or you can choose to go ahead and take advantage of it.
What if it doesn't, what if it doesn't pass, or would you then consider a smaller area? Or is this, if this is the hill you're going to make your stand on?
So we have not addressed that. We would like it to pass at this area, this size, again, because there's not a whole lot of restrictions to it, and we feel like it would be a positive thing, so. And the feedback we've received for folks that know the overlay and what it's doing, the zoning and the document, they're excited about it, so.
One more question, at least for now. The cluster neighborhoods, if one, if this passes and one gets approved, a cluster neighborhood after a meeting, is that neighborhood required to form an HOA?
That's a great question, and Tom, you might refer to this too, but I think I'll take a stab at it. So with the cottage neighborhoods, this is more a model for how to build one, whoever purchases the land and builds it, again, we don't want it to over-restrict things, so there are some, as you can see, regulations as far as the building of a cottage neighborhood, but how it's run, I think would be up to the person that owns it and builds it. We don't want to determine that for those folks.
Yeah, so it's going to be a case-by-case basis. Ultimately, it's going to come down to what is proposed for that cottage neighborhood cluster, the type of open space, and if it's common open space, generally what we see is there some type of entity that's put in charge of ownership and maintenance of that common open space, so that it's maintained and in keeping with, with the neighborhood cluster plan.
So when you say entity?
Could be HOA, could be that, but it could be some other entity that maintains the common...
Like a rental company, or?
No, some type of, some type of ownership group with, within the cottage neighborhood cluster would, could be formed to own and maintain that common space.
And I think that would, would be shared in the individual approval process with the individual public hearing that a cottage neighborhood would need to go through the city process.
Well, who owns the cottage neighborhood then? Is it everybody in there, or the individual lots broke out, they sell?
Commissioner, we had somebody else in order, so...
Well, I'll ask that question.
Commissioner, I'm going to move on to Commissioner Young, he was next in line.
Oh, okay, well...
I'm okay with that question being answered.
All right, go ahead. Go ahead Eric.
Well, why can't the city define what they want? Why do we just have to throw it up in the air and see what happens? It doesn't, sometimes guardrails are a good thing to have. So there ought to be maybe a choice of ownership organizations that the city can approve, but not just leave it to chance.
And all of that would be spelled out within that development plan that comes before the planning commission and city council. So if the overlay district is put in place and someone came forward with an application to do a cottage neighborhood cluster, there would be a development plan, there would be a full public hearing in front of the planning commission, it would be fully reviewed by city staff, engineers, planners, building staff, fire department, water, municipal services, all of them would review those, those documents to ensure that what is being built there is in accordance with the city's UDO, the city's design and construction manual, and as part of that, the city would, would look at how is this common space going to be owned and maintained? The guardrails that are, that are in the Arts Overlay District call out minimums, you know, minimum street-facing facades, minimum open space per dwelling unit, stuff like that. But again, on the back end, behind the scenes, before it, before anything is ever built, it's going to be fully reviewed by, by city staff, and we're going to ensure that the ownership is satisfied so that there is maintenance and ownership of that common open space.
So it's the common space, but not the ADU itself?
Correct.
So therefore, if one of these people in the ADU lets their house go or their property go, then what happens?
Again, it's going to go back to, to that cottage neighborhood plan. They could divide out these cottages into individual lots. They could just divide the units up where they own only the footprint of their, their building and everything else is common. Again, there's some, some variables there, but it's no different than a subdivision that comes forward.
All right, Commissioner Young?
All right, I've got a couple of questions, so bear with me if I, if you guys can. Real quick, on the individual lots, dividing into individual lots, one of them goes into disrepair. Everything I had read previously in all of this had said that you would not be able to divide the lots into individual lots. So is that a new change that's being introduced at this point?
So within the ADU regulations, you cannot subdivide off the principal structure from the ADU?
But in a cluster neighborhood, you're saying you can, or cluster lot?
Potentially, again, but that is going to go through a full vetting of a development plan that's going to have a full public hearing in front of the planning commission and is going to be reviewed by city staff to make sure that we, that it's in accordance with our rules and regulations, the UDO, design and construction man, manual, all of those things, to make sure that it's, that what's being built there, the city is comfortable with.
Why not bring it now? Why not decide that now and, and have it to where we can actually have a full plan in front of us instead of a partial plan that's going to be developed over time from a rezoning standpoint? If we're asking to rezone the area, you guys should have it all spelled out. You guys have had, as I understand, a lot of time to do this. You've been talking about it for years, right?
So, the reason was to give flexibility. Again, we don't want to over-restrict things, and we're allowing the city to do their process with that, to be able to make sure that there are regulations and restrictions in place per cottage neighborhood. Again, you know, it's one of those things where it's like, put more restrictions or don't put more restrictions. This one was one where there is the city process to fall back on, and that's, that's why. The city process will take care of that.
My opinion is that the city process should have that spelled out if they're going to bring this to us, in my opinion. You also got, you also stated that many people asked to opt into this. What about the people who are asking to opt out? Are those same people given that same freedom, that same benefit that you have given to all the people who say you, you wanted to opt in? Or are we restricted only allowing the people who want in, in, and not the people who want out, out?
Okay, I'll, I'll go ahead and answer that if you, if you don't mind. So, in that instance, because this is an overlay district, right? It's imposing some additional land use regulations, but those are there for those property owners that want to take advantage of them. If they don't want to take advantage of them, they don't have to. They don't have to do anything, as you've heard repeatedly tonight.
But they have to live within it and around it and next to them.
Like they do, like they do if the neighbor wants to build a garage.
But they have a right to protest right now.
No, you can't.
If they, if people bring things to the planning commission, that people can protest that, and you, and you said earlier that we have, we're not losing the right of protest, or the people that live within the area aren't losing the right of protest. So, you're saying, no, we don't have a right of protest. I'm just trying to clarify which one is it. Do we have a right of protest? And are we losing it?
So, let's be real clear. When you're talking about a rezoning, you always have the right to a legal protest. When you're talking about, again, once this is adopted and this goes into place, then, for example, if someone wants to build an ADU, they have standards that they have to adhere to that are now part of the UDO. There's no protest to that. Just like I said, if somebody wanted to build a garage today, you can't protest that. Legal protest, in the sense, because there's no rezoning. So, rezoning, protest attaches. If it's not a rezoning, there is no protest.
My last question, real quick. We got our letters of the fours, the people who are supporting it. Most of them are businesses. Was that intentional, or what, like, are we going to have some, the handful of local people? It just seems interesting that these are businesses from all over the place that are supporting it, and that often gives me pause, to wonder why are all the businesses so excited about this?
Hi, so...
As a business owner.
I'm going to speak to that. Those are all folks that are excited about it on an individual basis. Their signature just may have their business attached to it, but those are individual people, not specifically businesses, other than, say, the AARP. And those are the folks that were unable to attend today. So, most of the people that were able, able to attend are here. Some, some few people that could not attend went ahead and forwarded those letters to support, but they are individuals.
But, yes, but they're also, they're presidents of companies and capital groups and a variety of other things. I don't know that they live in Independence or in the area that's...
So, Mr. Commissioner, I can't tell you that. There will be speakers tonight in favor of this who are individuals, and when they get up and speak, they will announce themselves as individuals.
All right, commissioners, any other questions?
Chair.
Yes, sir.
I got several, I got several questions now. Okay, so, the vacant lots, how many of them are in the Inglewood District? Let you know of.
So, we've counted over 150, I think. We landed on, how many?
We left at 165.
We left at 165, and that doesn't include a small area that we didn't have a chance to check, so. But those are the, the numbers that we have currently.
Okay.
It used to be over 200 before the, the boundaries changed.
Okay, so the 165, how many of those lie in the Inglewood neighborhood?
I apologize, I have not walked just that perimeter to count just that amount, so.
Well, you've...
But are you saying the overlay district, or?
No, I'm just saying Inglewood neighborhood. See, you guys have this thing so big.
Okay, so...
That's what I'm complaining about, you guys have it so big. Let's get it down small so you, you guys can know what you're doing with, because, see, you're wanting to do the whole, this whole big area, and you got a lot of people here protesting it. So, that's what I'm saying, we need to get probably smaller, and that's what happened last time, that's why we asked you to make it smaller. You made it a little bit smaller, but you didn't make it small enough, in my opinion. So...
I would say, in the Inglewood area, if you drive through or walk the neighborhood, you're going to see quite a few vacant lots. Each street almost practically has one.
Okay. Well, you brought up that you've had a few new houses built. How many of those houses in this neighborhood have been rehabbed?
There's been a few that's been rehabbed, and then a few that has been rebuilt.
So, you're just a few. You don't know the numbers? It could be 10, it could be 20, it could be 200, it could be 1,000, right?
So, you are talking to community members, so we are doing our best as far as bringing those numbers to you.
Staff, do you know how many houses have been rehabbed?
We would have to go back and check, I mean, I mean, we, we would have to go look through building permit system to look at permits that...
Right, I understand, but I'm just saying, this is...
And I'm curious, why are you asking?
Because, I'm just curious, because you guys brought up you've had, have new houses built. I'm trying to figure out, staff, could people not build new houses on these lots that are vacant right now?
So, some of the vacant lots, no, because they're too small to build on.
They're too small?
Some of them, yes, you can.
Okay.
I will share that just up until a few years ago, there was a statistic where only one new home had been built in 40 years. That has changed in maybe the last four years or so, honestly, because of what's happening in Inglewood. We've been discussing different opportunities as far as getting loans approved for folks that want to build. We're trying to help folks purchase homes in the area and to also renovate.
Okay. You brought up sales tax. What is stopping you guys from going back and asking for tax in this area when it's approved?
This is a land use document, has nothing to do with taxes, we're asking for land use.
You're making an area, because I know, like, the 39th Street area, they go in, they add a tax on it. Also, there are several of them that's done that, because they come back for us. I want to know, is there some way that proves that this cannot be asked for people to pay a tax on their residential property, if you guys could have funds to do things with?
Well, as was mentioned earlier, the Inglewood Business District did create a Community Improvement District, which has a 1%, sales tax. That's being used for the benefit and enhancement of the Inglewood District. This, as you've heard now repeatedly, this is a land use document, it is not a tax document. There is no need, or actually any purpose, for anyone to impose additional taxes on these property owners for the benefit of improving the area. It's an opportunity, that's what this is. This is a document that provides opportunity to property owners in the Inglewood Overlay District to do improvements on their property if they so choose. If they don't want to, they don't have to. Hence, there is no need for a tax.
But is there anything in writing that says they cannot do a tax in the future?
Anything in writing where?
That's what I'm saying.
Well, I mean, are we talking the state of Missouri? You're talking the US Constitution?
I'm talking city.
I don't know what you're talking about.
The city of Independence, with a tax on it.
I'm going to step in. I, I don't think that's relevant to this particular use. What we're discussing is not a tax use, so...
I'll make a motion that we postpone this indefinitely.
Second.
Do I have a second?
Second.
A second. Any discussion?
Yes, Chair.
Yes.
The reason why I do this, because we've asked them to make this smaller. It's a good idea, it's a great idea, but we ask them that they need to make it smaller so they can prove that it's a good idea and a great idea. That's the reason I'm asking to do this. I'd like them to make it smaller. That's what we did last time, and you didn't make it small enough. You've still got too many people here, too many residents that are upset. So, I'm saying, if you make it smaller, they'd probably go through flying colors.
Any comments, other commissioners?
I would like to make a comment as the newest commissioner here, representing the Latino community, which is not much representation here. I'm not sure the reasons. However, however, you know, I just tried to find out the perceived threat. I have not heard a perceived threat from individuals in, in this neighborhood, and I would like to hear them before we move to a motion. And to make sure, I, I attest to whatever my opinion is, and to understand. I, what I hear is that a question has been answered, and we're just not, not conforming to individual opinion, but I need to hear, why is this a threat? When it's a good...
Same decorum, please.
So, there is a motion and a second.
Chair, point of order.
Yes.
Can you ask the audience for the same decorum from both sides?
Absolutely. All right, we're going to, any other questions?
I'd like to make a comment.
Go ahead, Eric.
I, too, would like to see it smaller, but everybody's here, let's just get through this and at least get somewhere down the road so we know more about what we're doing. But I am a little disappointed that it is not smaller. I know you want a lot of people, you say you have a lot of people to do this, and that's maybe true, but I don't know that there's a lot of wisdom in doing such a big thing. Independence isn't really great with a lot of change, so. But anyway, I agree with Commissioner Pepe that we should just go ahead and, and get through this a little farther, and if you want to take a vote, that's fine. If you might want to withdraw your motion, that's up to you, so...
Do you want to continue with the vote?
Yes.
Commissioner? All right, we're, any other comments before we vote? All right, what'd you call the roll?
Okay, so this is a motion to postpone this indefinitely. Commissioner Ferguson?
Yes.
Commissioner Nesbit?
Yes.
Commissioner O'Neill?
No.
Commissioner Torres?
No.
Commissioner Young?
Yes.
Commissioner Ashbaugh?
No.
Chair Wiley?
No. The motion fails.
Four for, it fails.
All right. We're going to take a quick three-minute break. When we return, those that want to speak in favor, we will begin, we will begin again. When we return, those that want to speak in favor, we will begin, we will begin again. All right, 7:14. The meeting's called back to order.
Point of order. I received my packet on Friday of the documents and started reviewing them in preparation for the meeting. And as I reviewed them, I also came across the website that talks about the overlay. And I noticed that the documents don't seem to be the same that are posted online versus what we received. And I know that there was one amended page that we accepted.
We haven't said.
Well, that was given to us. But what was online even today at 1:00 this afternoon is not the same documents that we received. So I'm just trying to find out which documents are we supposed to be approving? Are we approving what was given to us on Friday or mailed to us? Or are we approving documents that are posted online?
We will have a conversation when we hear the sides and before a vote on what recommendations are being made by the city staff and the applicants. And then we'll vote on that with any amendments. Does that answer your question?
Yes.
All right, thank you. All right, we're going to go ahead and proceed with those that are in, would like to speak in favor. What I would ask is that we're not going to allow more than three minutes per speaker. If someone before you speaks and says something that you wanted to say, just say that you agree with what they said. That way, we all will hear from everyone, but not necessarily hear the same things repeated over and over again. We want to be very fair. We want to listen to everyone. And as the chairperson, I do have a right to limit the time of speaking. So for the fours, you will have three minutes. We do have a list in order. Vice Chair Ashbaugh will read off the first two names, so the first person will come in. Make sure you introduce yourself and give your home address. Speak very clearly into the microphone. You will receive a one-minute warning from staff member Rice when you have one minute and then think about wrapping up. Does everyone who wants to speak in favor understand?
Chair.
Yes.
Robert's rule of order says they can allow them ten minutes.
Actually, I provided Robert's rules of order and went over that. And Mitch, would you like to address that, counselor?
Well, I believe the chairman has, or the chairperson in this case, has the ability to limit the amount of time in a given situation. And given the number of speakers, three minutes seems perfectly acceptable to me. This is something that's done in most meetings at the city level. I've seen the mayor do this numerous times where because of the number of people speaking, you have to limit the amount of time just to make sure everybody gets heard.
So that has been my decision to make sure everyone is heard. So Vice Chair, would you please read off the first two names? And then he will announce the next person to get in line. That way, we can also make sure everybody's ready to go.
If I mispronounce your name, give me a little grace, please. The first person to speak in favor is G.K. Callahan, and then the person after them is Christina Leaky.
Hello, my name is G.K. Callahan, and I live at 9509 East 13th Street South. That is part of the Arlington Heights neighborhood, but I am a member of the Inglewood community. I'm here today to speak in favor of the overlay. I moved to this neighborhood three years ago with my partner. I moved here because of the art center and because of the overlay, but at that time, I would not have been able to buy a house without the help of this community. They helped us navigate banks, student loans, and help with our down payment. They made something that was inaccessible accessible to us, and they changed our life. So that's why I stand here today. I've worked in community development for MU Extension in the state of Missouri for the last 10 years. And I love being part of a community that wants to invest in itself and invest in change. I think this is a wonderful opportunity. Some things I think that are important to note about this overlay is that this overlay is a community-driven effort. The community asked for this. The community came together and tried to decide how we were going to solve a problem when we were left by ourselves, not being able to solve this through the help of the city or the state government. Another thing that I think is really important to note is that this is a tool that'll improve things for all generations. This can not only help young folks that want to move into the neighborhood and invest in the community, but it'll also help people who are aging in place. As you'll see in your support letters, AARP is one of the many people who support this effort for ADUs and alternative dwellings, or whatever they're called, sorry. And to keep it short and brief, I just want to say that I try to leave the place that I live better than I found it, and I work really hard to support that mission. I do volunteer efforts to clean the sidewalk, the neighborhood. I work with people with disabilities. I know that this is a great tool, and that this can help all of us achieve a better place to live. Thank you, Commissioner.
Thank you. We have, no clapping, please.
Okay. After Christina, Benjamin Dawson is the next person.
Go ahead, Christina.
Good evening, Commissioner. Christina Leaky, I'm a resident at 2310 South Crenshaw in Independence. However, I'm here to represent as CEO of Truman Heritage Habitat for Humanity. We are a community housing development organization designated by the city of Independence to do affordable housing development. And our work has primarily been in Northwest Independence over the last 20 years. We are actually an organization that is 35 years old, and we both are a developer of housing opportunities that provide homeownership in an affordable way for families who are seeking to have a home of their own. And we also are a provider of home preservation activities, which have largely, again, been focused in Northwest Independence. And that is because of the degree of community support that we see invested from stakeholders in that area and because the city has made Northwest Independence a priority for reinvestment dollars over the last two or three decades. So we're very fortunate to have been invited by the Inglewood Arts community to be their primary housing developer for affordable housing opportunities. And we're very grateful for the opportunity to support this particular initiative. Habitat for Humanity is a global organization, and our vision is a world where everyone, no matter who you are, what color your skin is, where you live, that you have a decent place to call home. Our mission is we put our love for neighbor into action. We bring people together, members of the community, many of which are sitting in this room, to build homes and improve homes and build community and provide hope. We believe that the proposal that is before you is a tool that can be used to accomplish these things. Our housing and community strategy works to advance three goals.
One minute.
Including creating livable communities where we can improve access to affordable housing that supports all residents' health and well-being. Providing equitable communities that, in working to co-create and uncover innovative housing and community development solutions that respond to the needs and experiences of marginalized people that have historically been excluded from housing opportunities. And finally, to create resilient communities. We support ways for residents to withstand and respond to social, cultural, economic, political, and environmental challenges. That is why we are supporting the Inglewood Arts Overlay Zone. We believe that the tools that will create an opportunity for smaller homes, accessible dwelling units, and cluster communities will support the vision that we have for a world where everyone has a decent place to live.
Thank you.
After Benjamin Dawson, Mark Simkowski is next.
Benjamin Dawson, I live at 1605 South Northern Boulevard. Thank you so much for giving us an opportunity to speak here tonight. I am not here representing a CEO or any sort of business. I don't work for Inglewood Arts. I volunteer for them sometimes because I like art. It's one of the reasons I moved here. When I was buying my house, I knew I wanted two things. One was something that was about 100 years old, and one was in a community where I felt like I could actually be a neighbor, not just a resident, but an actual neighbor. And I'm proud to say that from living in Inglewood and living and being involved with Inglewood Arts, that's something that I feel like has definitely come to fruition. I look at the progress that's already been made in our neighborhood just over the last five years that I've been there, and it's very noticeable, and I feel like no one here will deny that. So when Inglewood Arts was telling me about the housing overlay, or excuse me, zoning overlay that they were looking to pass, I definitely asked questions. But if there are any people who I would trust to make decisions for the best of all of us neighbors, all of us, even the ones who are opposed, I would absolutely trust this organization. As G.K. has spoken, the neighbors got together and supported him. They've been nothing but welcoming for my fiancee and I as we have moved to the area. And I see a ton of potential. As I walk through the neighborhood, as has been discussed, there's all kinds of vacant lots, areas where houses burnt down and now either because of zoning laws or economics, nothing can be built there. So what this zoning overlay does is it expands the rights of homeowners and potential developers or someone who's looking for a place to build a home, and it makes it more realistic for them to build in our area. One of the things that's really important about that is by having more neighbors, we can make the small businesses in the area more viable. So all of the empty shops that we have on Winter Road, we can make those more attractive to developers. We can reduce vacant lots. If you've done any reading, a lot of times, one of the things that's correlated with crime in an area is vacant property. And so by tackling the vacant properties, we can increase commercial real estate desirability, and we can also potentially reduce crime that's in the area. I'm never necessarily the most eloquent person, and so I'm going to keep this brief. I have unequivocal support for the zoning overlay. I love that it means that on my double lot, if I potentially want to build a small place for my parents to live and age gracefully, I love that. Mostly, I just love that it increases my rights as a homeowner and lets me choose if it gets rezoned, not someone else. Thank you.
Thank you.
After, I'm sorry, sir, can you tell me your name?
Mark, Mark Simkowski.
After Mark, Jason White is up.
Good evening, Chairperson Wiley and Commission members. I'm Mark Simkowski. You did very well on my name, actually. Thank you. 1720 South Am Court, Independence, out of Houston, New Remington. My wife and I have a history of living in the, excuse me.
Put the mic up. I can't hear you.
Too tall. I can either, yeah.
You can move it up on the top shelf.
Sorry.
Just move it up on the top shelf.
There you go.
There we go. Too tall. We have a history of living in the area, and we'd like to actually move back. And one of those reasons is, it hasn't been mentioned much, but we have a daughter with special needs. And she's very independent. Many people in this room know her. She gets around town. And she lives in her own apartment right now. But as she ages and we age, we'd like to have the opportunity to have her closer, but yet be in her own structure. And for us, the ADU part of this really makes the most sense. Current zoning at whatever that number is, 1,000 square feet or whatever, is much too much for her, even if we found a lot that could, or a house with a lot the size that would accommodate that. And to me, it's, to us, it's a position of safety for her, ability to continue to help her as she grows independently and be much closer to her. And an ADU of 500, 600 square feet makes economic sense, and it also, of course, is easier to manage. And for a person with special needs, disabilities, that can be important to those people. I can, of course, see, as mentioned before, apply into other similar family situations with aging. But in my particular case, I'm just saying, for a person with disabilities.
One minute.
The ADU takes, is really important to us. So I believe overall, the overlay has many more positives than it does negatives, and thank you for your time.
Thank you.
After Jason White, William Moore is up.
Jason White, I live at 1024 South Forest. I've lived there since 1992. My grandparents owned it back in 1898. I went to the Inglewood Theater when I was a kid, spending time with my grandparents. We've got deep roots. One of the things I respect about this effort is it's community-driven. So you didn't have any developers in the project. You didn't have any bankers in the project. You didn't have any builders in the project. It was the community that brought this forward. So at this time, I would like to ask, if you support this issue, would you please stand up? Please stand up if you support this issue. So look at these people. There's not a developer there. There's not a builder there. There's not a banker there. Those are community members that are trying to make their community better. Thank you very much. I'm here respectfully. I would appreciate the audience treating me with the same respect I've treated them. But let's talk for a few moments about what this is not, because there's a lot of disinformation that's been spread. This does not affect anybody's taxes. This is not a taxing jurisdiction. You want to make it a taxing jurisdiction, then you're going to have to go get the petitions, ask these people to have a taxing jurisdiction, and then put it on the ballot. Nobody's trying that. If you want to do it, have at. But this is not a taxing jurisdiction. Don't confuse the world by trying to pretend that it is. Don't make it sound like it creates an increase in anybody's property taxes. It doesn't. What does this do? It gives me back my property rights that you, the city of Independence, took from me years ago. 25 years ago, if you know where I live, I have a big backyard. My mother-in-law wanted to move back to town. I looked in my backyard and I said, I absolutely could put up a mother-in-law cottage, but not according to your rules. I'm denied my property rights to do in my backyard what I see fit for my family. You all removed that from me decades ago, not you individually, you, the city of Independence. I want my property rights back.
One minute.
It's that simple. These people need to know that if they don't want to build one in their backyard, they don't have to. But why should they have the right to tell me that I cannot build a mother-in-law cottage so I keep my mother-in-law close to me in my backyard like they did before World War II and about 10 or 15 years afterwards, before the city took away my property rights? This is a property rights issue. The people that are going to show up behind me, asking you to vote no, have got it confused, and I'm sorry for that. I respect their right, but I want them to respect my right to do what is best for my family with the property I've worked hard to pay for. Thank you.
Thank you.
After Bill Moore, Tammy Parsons is next.
Good evening, Bill Moore, 2838 South.
And for us, the ADU part of this really makes the most sense. Current zoning at whatever that number is, 1,000 square feet or whatever, is much too much for her, even if we found a lot that could, or a house with a lot the size that would accommodate that. And to me, it's a, it's, to us, it's a position of safety for her, ability to continue to help her as she grows independently and be much closer to her. And an ADU of 500, 600 square feet makes economic sense, and it also, of course, is easier to manage. And for a person with special needs, disabilities, that can be important to those people. I can, of course, see, as mentioned before, apply into other similar family situations with aging. But in my particular case, I'm just saying, for a person with disabilities.
One minute.
The ADU takes, is really important to us. So I believe overall, the overlay has many more positives than it does negatives, and thank you for your time.
Thank you.
After Jason White, William Moore is up.
Jason White, I live at 1024 South Forest. I've lived there since 1992. My grandparents owned it back in 1898. I went to the Inglewood Theater when I was a kid, spending time with my grandparents. We've got deep roots. One of the things I respect about this effort is it's community-driven. So you didn't have any developers in the project, you didn't have any bankers in the project, you didn't have any builders in the project. It was the community that brought this forward. So at this time, I would like to ask, if you support this issue, would you please stand up? Please stand up if you support this issue. So look at these people. There's not a developer there, there's not a builder there, there's not a banker there. Those are community members that are trying to make their community better. Thank you very much. I, I'm here respectfully. I would appreciate the audience treating me with the same respect I've treated them. But let's talk for a few moments about what this is not, because there's a lot of disinformation that's been spread. This does not affect anybody's taxes. This is not a taxing jurisdiction. You want to make it a taxing jurisdiction, then you're going to have to go get the petitions, ask these people to have a taxing jurisdiction, and then put it on the ballot. Nobody's trying that. If you want to do it, have it. But this is not a taxing jurisdiction. Don't confuse the world by trying to pretend that it is. Don't make it sound like it creates an increase in anybody's property taxes. It doesn't. What does this do? It gives me back my property rights that you, the City of Independence, took from me years ago. Twenty-five years ago, if you know where I live, I have a big backyard. My mother-in-law wanted to move back to town. I looked in my backyard and I said, I absolutely could put up a mother-in-law cottage, but not according to your rules. I'm denied my property rights to do in my backyard what I see fit for my family. You all removed that from me decades ago. Not you individually, you, the City of Independence. I want my property rights back.
One minute.
It's that simple. These people need to know that if they don't want to build one in their backyard, they don't have to. But why should they have the right to tell me that I cannot build a mother-in-law cottage so I keep my mother-in-law close to me in my backyard, like they did before World War II and about 10 or 15 years afterwards, before the city took away my property rights? This is a property rights issue. The people that are going to show up behind me, asking you to vote no, have got it confused, and I'm sorry for that. I respect their right, but I want them to respect my right to do what is best for my family with the property I've worked hard to pay for. Thank you.
Thank you.
After Bill Moore, Tammy Parsons is next.
Good evening, Bill Moore, 2838 South Brentwood Court, Independence, Missouri. So what you've heard so far tonight is a solid case for restoring property rights to owners of property within the Inglewood Overlay District, a case which has the support from the community and has the support from the professional staff. During the testimony that follows, we ask you not to be distracted by the noise. Instead, we ask you to support this initiative to restore property rights to owners of property within the Inglewood Overlay District, providing that assist that people need to make their lives better. We ask you to vote yes for the opportunity to construct ADUs for individuals and families to help their aging parents and to help their children with special needs. We ask you to vote yes for the opportunity to construct smaller homes on vacant lots. These are lots that once had homes. These homes that are built will be, will afford the opportunity for people to move into the district so that they can seek their little piece of the American dream. We ask you to vote yes for the opportunity to construct cottage neighborhood districts. These are districts that will be created and formed as they gel forward. We may have a cottage neighborhood that might have a couple of homes. We may have a cottage neighborhood that may have several homes. The rules and regulations that are put in place are rules and regulations that are more than adequate to govern the operation and control of those houses. We ask you to vote yes.
One minute.
For restoring property rights to owners of property in the Inglewood Overlay District. This is progress. This is opportunity. Finally, we ask you to vote tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up?
Tammy Parsons.
Madam Chair, Commissioner, I presented, I just signed a paper because they said that you were speaking.
All right, thank you. Next.
All right, then Teresa Dorsh.
She spoke as well. She was part of the applicant.
Oh, you're the, I'm sorry.
Next.
Terry Snap. And after Terry, William McLeod.
I'm Terry Snap. I live at 1809 Norwood. My wife, Betty, and I have lived in the Inglewood area for almost 50 years. We love our neighborhood. We have been active in it for all those years in a variety of volunteer roles, all focused on improving our neighborhood, getting to know our neighbors, and creating a caring community that is willing to do things that take effort, hope, and vision. I am enthusiastically supportive of this initiative. For full transparency, I am Chair of the Inglewood Arts Board and have been part of it since it began. I'm retired, and I spent my career in fundraising. It has been the privilege of my life and the pinnacle of my profession to raise, with many others, almost $4 million that have been invested in Inglewood in the past three years. I am proud of that. It is not the end, it's the beginning of a new chapter for Inglewood. And our goal as a nonprofit, as Michael reiterated, was twofold: to create a thriving art center, which we have done, from a building that was an eyesore, that now is a building that we can all be proud of. Second, to provide sustainable, affordable housing in a neighborhood and area of the city that's considered, at least in my eyes, as the most impoverished area of the city. We cannot allow that to continue. We never have all the answers to every question about what might happen in the future. But here's where my heart is. My heart is that this is initiative based on hope, not on fear. Is it an initiative to bring neighbors together, to attract new people who want to move to Inglewood, not away from it? We have already, in the cases we can document, counted 20 families who have already moved to Inglewood because of what's happening. I think that is just the beginning, and there's no reason why we cannot be willing to take hope and make it real. And I think that the sample size of this initiative ought to be larger, not smaller. And that's why I agree with the current size of about 4,000 homes.
Your time is up, thank you.
Thank you.
After, after William, Marvin Sands is up.
I'm William McLeod. I live at 1716 South Scott Avenue. I'm fourth generation of people that lived here. My great-great-grandfather came from Scotland and settled here, and then my grandfather built a new home here in, by Hill Park. I grew up right down from Hill Park with my dad and mom. And then I met my wife. We were high school sweethearts. The house I live in today, we used to drive by that when we was dating. And if that house ever goes for sale, we're going to buy that. And it finally did. And, you know, the only thing that works in the old house is the owner. And, you know, it's like, the whole, whole community, I've seen it from its heyday to this fallen, destructive, self-imploding thing. The homeless problem we've got, we've got a school problem. We were PTA, my wife was president of PTA at Proctor Elementary for three years, four years. But our kids went to Proctor Elementary. And, you know, I was just interested in getting sidewalks so kids could walk to Proctor. I was involved heavily with the Independent School District in Kansas City. I was involved in Progress Independence. The street lights down Winter Road, they were going to put big silver ones at first, and we kind of got together as a group and said, hey, let's put something that's more presentable. It goes with the architecture.
One minute.
There's so much architecture in that area that it's just, you can find Frank Lloyd Wright houses, four-square, it's everything. I mean, it's a gem. It's, should be Independence' gem. And if we don't, if we just keep on this mindset that these neighborhoods were divided like they were, because they were cut up kind of weird, these are natural boundaries we've got. You know, 23rd Street's a natural boundary, Truman Road's a natural boundary, Chrisler's a natural boundary. You know, 24 Highway's a natural boundary. It's just, it just makes sense to do a block like that. And, you know, if we keep doing nothing, it's just going to keep going worse. When my kids were in school, it was a 60%, 40% rental. 60% was owner occupied and 40% was rental.
Your time is up, thank you.
And those that was out of state.
Thank you. Who's next?
Marvin Sands is next, and Grant Davis is after Mark.
Thank you very much. My name, my name is Marvin Sands. I live at 153 East 1033rd Street in Independence, and I've lived there a very long time, over 50 years. For the better part of three years, AARP has led efforts to promote stable communities by expanding the availability of housing choice in Kansas City metro. We have been particularly focused on accessory dwelling units, ADUs. ADUs can be converted portions of existing homes into ADUs, additions to new or existing homes attached to ADUs, or even newer converted standalone structures on the same property as the main house that can be used as living spaces detached ADUs. The owner of the ADUs is the owner of the main house. Cities across the nation and in the country, for example Denver, Austin, Chicago, and locally North Kansas City and the city of Kansas City, have recognized the value of having ADU options and having adopted zoning regulations that permit or encourage using them in residential areas. Further, ADUs promote livable communities by providing, one, by providing convenient living arrangements and multi-generational housing options for care and support of family members. Two, promoting intergenerational wealth. And three, enabling aging-in-place options for older residents. And finally, four, increasing affordable housing options. Surveys of our membership have shown support for 80 years. For example, the most compelling reason for why older adults would consider an accessory dwelling unit is to live near others or their family members, but still have their own space, 67%. Receive help with daily activities, 63%. And for, for economic reasons, 54%. Overall, we are excited that an ordinance was introduced into your legislative process in Independence. We are writing and speaking to ask for your support for approval of this ordinance.
One minute.
On behalf of AARP, thank you for taking the time to hear this letter and consider our request. We truthfully believe that ADUs will add invaluable new options to increase affordable housing units in Independence. With your help, we look forward to passing of this ordinance and the positive impacts it has on our and my community. Thanks very much.
All right. Thank you.
My name is Grant Watkins Davis. I live at 4621 Southeastland Center Drive, apartment 1113. And I frankly think that this plan is excellent and think that it should be applied across the entire city, not just a small area. But that's not what's on the agenda tonight. Seeing this in this area would be excellent for the city, and it would go against the years of restricting the property rights of people in this community and across this country. Since the 1950s, zoning has made it more difficult to build. It has made it more difficult to build smaller houses in particular, like the type that you see in Inglewood, and it has made it so that housing crisis, so that it's kind of finally come to a point now where, you know, we're in a housing crisis where people aren't able to build smaller houses, or aren't able to build houses that are affordable, particularly for people my age. When I look around this room, with the exception of the few kids that are here with their, with their parents, I'm 29, and I think that I'm one of the youngest people in this room. And, you know, for me, this is a, this is an issue for the future. This is about people my age being able to buy homes and be able to continue to live in this community affordably and be able to live close to our parents, close to our family. You know, there have been a time just in my lifetime where if a family member had an ADU, it could have helped me or another family member. So being able to do these kind of things in Independence would be great for not just our, you know, our elders, but for our young people and making it easier for them to stay in this community. I've had to leave the community for reasons, for, for economic reasons, and then I've been fortunate to be able to come back. And I would like to be able to stay here long-term, but issues with zoning, making it more restrictive and harder to build housing, makes that more difficult, makes it more expensive, makes it harder for me to be able to buy a home. So I would like you all to vote yes, because a vote no will continue the status quo. It'll lead, a vote no will keep lots vacant. Vote no will make the cost of housing continue to soar, and a vote no will continue population stagnation, not just in Inglewood, but in Independence as a whole. You have the chance to change that by voting yes. A vote yes is a vote to support our elders. A vote yes is a vote to support our disabled brothers and sisters and veterans. A vote yes is, that is, vote yes to support affordable housing for everyone, but especially younger residents trying to get into or save money for their home, for their first home. Please vote yes for the future, for our future. Thank you.
Thank you.
The next person is Lamont, or Lamonti Chestnut. Madam Chair, that's the last person on the list.
All right, is there anyone who'd like to speak in favor that did not sign up? Were you sworn in?
No.
Would you raise your right hand, please? Do you swear to tell the truth to the best of your ability to tonight's hearing?
I do.
Go ahead, state your name and your address.
My name is Melanie Jaakel, spelled J-A-C-K-E-L. I live at 2737 Glendale Avenue, and I just want to say I support this wholeheartedly. Everything I heard tonight, I'm very much in favor of. And the reason I'm even here, why did I show up 11 years ago? Well, first of all, I'm born and raised in Independence, and I am proud to be a homeowner since 2001 here in Independence. And 11 years ago, I enrolled my daughter in school here in Independence, and I was so curious to learn, that very first year in kindergarten, 11 years ago, that this little hair salon in Inglewood made it possible for my child to have the most exciting art experience in her classroom. And through this fundraiser they were doing. And I just thought, you know, I'm going to go get my hair done there because I want to give it back to them. That's just really cool. I see the school and the kids there and the need, and they're seeing it too. And that's for my relationship with the people in Inglewood, the business owners there, seeing what kind of people they are. And they love our community too, and they're just as passionate about, passionate about making our city exceptional, a place where we actually want to live. And another point I'd like to make is follow the artists. When you want to invigorate a community, revive a community, the artists lead the way every time. If you think about driving through Inglewood 20 years ago, like I was in high school, that I wasn't allowed to do without, it was a scary place. And 20 years ago, downtown Kansas City was a scary place, and now it's the thriving crossroads. And it's the artists who move in because it's affordable, they make it exciting, they make it accessible for as many people as possible, and create so much opportunity. And I really hope you are hearing that with your heart tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else who'd like to speak in favor? Have you been sworn in?
No.
Okay. Have you been sworn in, sir? All right, raise your right hand. Do you promise to, to the best of your ability, tell the truth tonight in this hearing?
Yes.
Go ahead. State your name and your address.
Andres Algado, A24 South Quinbridge, but I'm going to be translating for him.
Thank you.
My name is Luis Montejo. I live in 1943 South Harbor, Independence, Missouri.
Okay. I'm a little bit nervous, but three years ago, he, him and I, we came here with a petition in front of you guys. It was to actually split a deed because the house that he bought in the, in what, how do you say? Yes, neighborhood, has a little cottage in the back that, you know, and it's fixing. You guys said, no, we cannot turn on the light, we cannot turn on the water, and it's no livable. He invested already $27,000 on that little cottage, and the City of Independence has made it very difficult, very hard to actually say yes. We came here tonight thinking that, you know, they were wrong, but no. Sorry, guys, you guys are wrong. 100%. Yeah. You don't own your house, they do. They have the power, you don't. Yes. 100%.
I was just going to say, you can only address the chair up here and not individuals in the room. Are you completed?
Pretty much. I mean, vote yes. If, if my house was on that location, I would definitely vote yes. 100%.
All right, thank you very much.
No, you're welcome.
Thank you. Anyone else who wants to speak in favor? Have you been sworn in, sir?
I have, but I'll do it again.
All right, you have?
Yeah.
All right, go ahead and state your name and address then.
I don't really want to talk directly to, to the pros and cons, but I've not heard any comments about the infrastructure impact that this is going to have. There'd be...
Sir, you need to say your name and address.
Oh, I'm sorry. My name is William Curly. I live at 10808 East Westport Road, Independence, Missouri.
Okay, and this is to speak in favor. So stick to speak in favor.
Well, as long as people know what the, every time there's a larger load on the Independence power and light, the supplier, the rates do go up, the greater need, the higher the price. And the same thing with natural gas, and the same thing with water. I have heard no comments whatsoever about how the impact's going to affect the potential residents who are going to live in these smaller, newer homes, because all the yards and everything else in this street can be dug up for, well, we got all kinds of roadwork out here right now. I would just like to have some numbers on how this project...
It sounds like you have more of a question, so I'm going to let you speak with one of the city's staff members instead.
All right, thank you.
All right. Can you answer his question in public, please?
So whenever a building permit for an ADU would come forward, we would have to verify the ability to have utilities to that site. Maybe there is, maybe there isn't. It would have to be looked at on a case-by-case basis.
But just to add to, to that, one of the, one of the things that we did as far as researching ADUs, IPL, we reached out to, to them. They have enough power to supply power to ADUs in, in this, in this part of town, so that is not a concern.
All right, thank you. Did that answer your question, sir?
Yes.
All right, thank you.
Tom, what's that?
The city, we did reach out to IPL. IPL has looked at this, this issue, and IPL has enough capacity to provide power to the ADUs in this area.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else who would like to speak in favor? Go ahead and come forward. State your name and your address, please.
My name is Helen Hurley. I live at 1701 South Evanston Avenue. I feel compelled to come up and speak to the commission, Madam Commissioner as well, that I am in favor of this. We moved to this community 15 years ago, and the big draw was community. We left a community that was divisive, it was ugly, and nobody wanted change or growth. And here we have a grassroots effort, one I'm proud to support, one that I volunteer with, because it does bring us into a future of a solid community. I've been in reentry work, working with people who are returning from prison, who have a hard time finding affordable housing. I work with families who have a hard time finding affordable housing. And part of that is, is because they can't afford large homes. The draw to this community is the opportunity for affordable housing and living in a community that will support them. People my age, may sound like ageism, we got to step out of the way and let the younger generation help us build a future for them. Our time on this earth is pretty limited. We don't know when it will end, but we know that they have a vision, they have hope, and they want a community, and I want that for them. So I hope you will look at the greater good that the overlay district would do, what it offers for so many people, and the possibility of bringing even more people into our community, which increases our tax base. So I applaud anyone who will come up here at the age of 26 and say, this is what I want for my future. I support them. I support this initiative. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next up? Have you been sworn in?
No.
All right, would you raise your hand? Do you swear to tell the truth to the best of your ability tonight for this hearing?
Yes, I do.
Your name and your address.
My name is Hannah Finnan. I live at 169 Beach Street in Gardner, Kansas.
You're going to have to speak way up. Do we need to take? Do we need to allow her to speak, Mitch?
It's a full public hearing.
Counselor? Do we need to take a vote to allow her to speak? She's from Gardner, Kansas.
We don't care, it's a full public, it's a full public hearing.
Hey!
Everyone, please.
There's no residency requirement for who can speak on this.
Okay. Thank you, that's all I wanted to know.
It's a full public hearing.
All right, thank you. Go ahead.
Thank you. Yeah, I live at 169 Beach Street in Gardner, Kansas. My connection to Inglewood is I started as an intern for, in college. I'm 22 years old, and I feel like I have something to say. More than a community, I've found a family here and hope for my future that I worry about quite a lot these days. I am also one of the current, about to be current resident artists at Inglewood as well. And I feel that this overlay will make a difference, because, yeah, I live far away right now, and that really sucks, and I want to move closer, and I really want to be a part of this community. And doing something like this that would make a house affordable to me is something that I didn't even see in my future before this. So I wholeheartedly put my support behind this overlay, and thank you for your time.
Thank you. All right, I'm going to... in the opportunity to speak in favor? All right, anyone else? Last call. Go ahead, come forward.
I have not been sworn in.
Have you been sworn in?
No.
All right.
Commissioner? Chairman? I'm sorry. You might ask if, if there's anyone else that needs sworn in, and then we can do it big time again.
All right. Anyone else that has plans on speaking either in favor or opposed that has not been sworn in?
Could we line up, please?
Can you please stand and raise your right hand? If you're not sworn in. Okay. Raise your right hand, and just, do you promise to the best of your ability to speak the truth tonight in this hearing?
Yes, even before God.
All right, thank you. All right, your name and your address, please.
Thank you, yeah. My name is Gerardo Martinez, and I live in 115 South Park Avenue. I became a Habitat for Humanity homeowner, six kids, my wife. I do work at UMKC, and I'm grateful for living at the Habitat for Humanity home as a homeowner. That gave me the opportunity to advance in my studies, in my college degree. And so I work a lot in, in the, for the whole state, striving to include everyone on the table, every voice, every nationality. And so I was just coincidentally speaking to Mr. Luis Montejo, whose son was here speaking, and he didn't even know what was this meeting about, whether it was good or not, about what Inglewood Arts Center is proposing. And so I explained just a little bit about, to him. One of the beautiful things about Inglewood Arts Center, and what, Inglewood Arts Center and what they do is that they include every single voice in the neighborhoods. So they include the Latinos, the African-Americans, and anyone else. They want to hear their voices and what they have to say to be part of this community. So I do feel included. They make efforts to translate documents to everyone, so when they have posters or any banners or anything like that, they make sure that they do it in all, in different languages. And that is just a little aspect that is important for all, everyone to be included and to feel included. I'm grateful for what the initiative and what they're doing, I think is going to be extremely positive. And so when we speak about smaller, making a smaller project, I don't know what that means, being smaller. They did it smaller, brother Nesbit. And so I think it's a very positive thing, and I think we all in every, in this room should be very supportive. And if anyone has any differences of opinion, come and talk to the director, to Michael or to Teresa, and, and let's clarify things. I think this is very positive for the future development and the purification of Independence.
One minute.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. All right, last call, if anyone wants to speak in favor. All right, we are going to move on to those that wish to speak in opposition. And we're going to go ahead and read off five names. If you would go ahead and line up. We are going to start with Lee Phillips. She is the spokesperson for, I think, the petition that is not in favor, and I have agreed to let her have the time that she has prepared. So give her your time and attention as well. And then Eric, would you go ahead, Commissioner, and read off the next five names?
After Lee, there's Sherry Batrick, Jean Libby, Yvette Riddle, Edward Lee, and Jeff Ruoff.
All right.
How much time? I'm sorry. I beg your pardon, Chairman. How much, how much time were you...
Oh, she has the full time to finish hers. We believe it's, yeah.
Okay, real quick, as precedent has set, those who are against, hold them up or stand up, just so we have the same prop, the same thing. All right, my name is Lee Phillips. I live at 1423 South Maywood Avenue. Distinguished members of the commission, I stand before you tonight with a heavy heart and a deep sense of concern for the well-being of our constitutional freedoms. Tonight, there is a citizens' coalition to hold the line against the tyranny of government and subversion of the will of the people. The proposers of the EAOD would have everyone believe that they have the support of the community. You can clearly see by this ma, this room and the map that that is not truly accurate. Compared to the letters of support, I have over 200 copies of notarized protests in opposition, which we collected over a four-day period. That's an average of 50 protests being turned in each day, and there are more to be filed. There are so many things wrong and confusing regarding this proposal. I know that when there is confusion, it is not just, and things need to be tabled until there is a full, until there is full transparency and absolute clarity. First, I will submit that in 2023, the decision by this planning commission, the EAOD was put on indefinite hold. I have not seen the vote by this esteemed body where that hold was ever lifted. For this reason, you must reject this proposal in its entirety. Second, there's the non-conformity of documentation. You saw this tonight. As late as Sunday, August 25, 2024, there was a video meeting with Teresa and Tammy where they admitted that there are five different renditions of 14912, and that the plans offered to this planning commission as of Friday, August 23, 2024, may vary from what the people now see on Inglewood's, Inglewood's website. That is not okay. These two reasons stand on their own merits, therefore you must reject this proposal in its entirety. Third, Section 1470102, titled rezoning, subsection 1470102A of the city codes titled Authority to File, says, quote, "Rezoning applications may be filed only by the subject landowner, the subject landowner's authorized agent, or the community development director acting on the city's behalf," end quote. No member of Inglewood Arts is on my home deed or mortgage documents. No one else paid the down payment, no one else pays my bills or my taxes, no one else cuts my grasp or paints and repairs my home. I have not designated anyone to be my authorized agents, and the city does not own my property, so the community development director is not authorized to file for rezoning on my behalf. We would expect you, why, why would you expect us to give up our rights to rezone our own properties so that someone else can do it for us? It appears to me that this mass rezoning attempt is a violation of Code 1470102A, therefore you must reject this proposal in its entirety. Fourth, this portion, for this portion, you must understand that in the 2023 vote, one of the requirements was that all property owners within the affected area, not just within the 185-foot radius around it, were to be notified and included in the discussion. So let's take a look at Section 1470513 of our city code, titled Required Neighborhood Meetings. The code states, among other things, that, quote, "When a project requiring final site plan approval is within 185 feet of property zoned residential, except in city, county, state, or national park property, the applicant must conduct a neighborhood meeting to inform adjacent property owners about the project before any final site plan or building permit is approved. Notice by regular mail must be sent to the last known record owners of all property within 185 feet unless specified otherwise, as shown by the Jackson County tax records," end quote. It goes on to say that, quote, "The applicant shall schedule the neighborhood meeting for a time, date, and place reasonable to allow the adjourning property owners to attend. The applicant shall provide the community development department an affidavit stating when and where the meeting was held, along with the list of property owners the notice was mailed to," end quote. There was never a scheduled neighborhood meeting for anyone to attend, nor was there an affidavit stating when and where that meeting was to be held. Property owners were not notified, according to Jackson County tax records, but rather notices were mailed to the registered voters in this area. That is noncompliance. Again, since the last threshold was not met, it appears this is another violation of city codes, therefore you must reject this proposal in its entirety. It is deeply concerning to note that no comprehensive traffic study or impact assessment has been completed for either electrical or sewer impact, and what impact this will have on our overtaxed and older systems. How can we proceed with a proposal that will fundamentally alter our community without full transparency and understanding its impact? This, I'm going to skip that part because I don't want to say that. I have given you at least four, three lawful reasons why you must reject this proposal, plus a violate, didn't give you that, so there's that, to respect everyone's rights. Perhaps we can take the Inglewood Arts District and the overlay zoning proposal out of the mix. How about we take the accessory dwelling unit and the smaller home build and put it into the codes for everyone in the city of Independence to participate in? Let the people opt in and rezone their own properties as they see fit. If we do this, the overlay rezoning is absolutely unnecessary, and it should allow for new homeowners to build on those smaller properties. In conclusion, the homeowners in this area have poured their hearts and souls into their homes. We have invested too, our time, our resources, and our lives into this community, and now we are being told that we must sacrifice all of that simply because a few unelected individuals with a dream have decided what they know is best for us. This commission has our respect. Your oath requires you to uphold the Constitution of the United States. This case requires that deference be given to the property owners, all the property owners. I have given you a viable alternative to a rezoning overlay and cottage home builds. Tonight, we ask that you give us back the peace of mind in knowing that this type of proposal need never be brought forward again. Thank you. God bless.
I'm going to ask for decorum, please, please. All right.
My name is Sherry Batrick. I live at 11431 East 15th Street South. I have lived here since 2019, and I was never notified of any community meeting to discuss the Inglewood Arts overlay proposal. Nor, when I canvassed this area for the four days that we distributed information on how to protest, did I find one resident who knew what this was about or why this was being proposed. Lee has already indicated that you need to put, you need to table this for that reason alone, but I want to say a few other things. And I agree with everything that she said, by the way. I've got the letter from Teresa Dorsh informing me that I had the right to protest this. Guess what day? August 6, 2024, the day we were voting on the city charter. And the Red Line City Charter indicated that if it passed, if those five questions passed, the Red Line version did away with the Board of Equalization as an oversight organization to solve zoning disputes. That very same day that I got the letter and we had the vote on those questions was the same day that the yellow signs went up notifying the area of the Inglewood Arts. I find that a little bit difficult to believe, that that was coincidence, and I think it was planned. I went down to the city that day after I voted to get the protest form, and there was no such form for anyone who lived within the proposed zoning area. The existing form only was for those within 185 feet of the boundary, and the city told me that I would have to wait for them to contact their attorney to figure out how I could protest. Fortunately, the next day, when I went back to the city, Mr. Harker was there, and he was able to walk me through that form line by line, and we together adjusted the verbiage so that there was a form that could be used for protest. I went home, I typed it up, I returned the form to him, and that is what has been notarized for tonight. The final thing I would like to say is this, I applied for an artist residency with Inglewood Arts. I was told during my informational interview with Brandon Schnur, Director of Arts and Programming, that as a condition of having a residency, I would be required to be present at the Inglewood Arts District every week when there was a... at the Inglewood Arts District every week when there was a drag queen event. And as a resident, I would have to, or as a person, an artist in residence, I would have to be willing to sell tickets, concessions, and greet the people who were coming. And I was told that the reason this was so was because the Inglewood Arts District absolutely supports the LGBTQ agenda and movement. Please. I think this overlay is being designed to allow them control of the zoning so they can bring in all their cronies and take over the city.
Thank you. I'm going to ask for decorum. Once again, if I ask again, I will ask the police officers to start removing people. We have a lot of conversation to have, and I want to be respectful to everyone. All right, next up, please. Can you tell them, remind them who's next, please?
Jean Libby is next. Jean Libby is next.
Okay, not here, next? Oh.
Could you please call the names like you did for the pros? One at a time, just bring them up like that, please? So who is after her?
Yvette Riddle is afterwards.
My name is Jean Libby. Address 1909 South Ash. And I have to agree with Commissioner Nesbit that this area is far too large. I'm way out of Inglewood. I mean, yes, it's the Inglewood area, but not the arts area. I find it very difficult to believe that this will have no bearing on our taxes. We just went through a fight a year and a half or so ago with Jackson County because our assessments were radically changed. I've got a 900-square-foot house on a 50-by-135-foot lot, which all lots on that street in 1920 block are. And a two-bedroom, half-basement house suddenly jumped to like $68,000. And there was no way in the world that that house would bring that. So I'm thinking that it might not be this year, or next year, or the year after. But I'm, I'm still thinking that it's going to affect property values. And I can spit on the house next door on either side, and that's the way it is all the way down the street. There is one vacant lot at the corner of 20th and Ash where a house burned down. But other than that, this is just a crowded little neighborhood on a back street. And
One minute.
We feel that we are being pressured into the Inglewood Arts District, which I don't object to. I've been a certified Bob Ross oil painting teacher for almost 30 years, and I still teach in Sugar Creek. But I don't teach at Hobby Lobby or anyplace anymore because of the pandemic, because they closed all the classrooms. But I thank you for listening, and I thank Mr. Nesbit for saying that the thing is way too large.
Thank you very much.
Okay, Yvette Riddle. And then Edward Lee is after her.
Greetings. My name is Yvette Riddle. I live at 1421 South Willow Avenue. Inglewood Arts had six years to plan. The residents have had less than a month to learn about it and research it. Few people have the time, energy, and resources to go to that length. When I walked around handing out letters, people had a lot of questions, some of which I had answers to, some I don't. I often heard, "I got the letter, and I don't know what this means." You are the first person to talk to me about it. People need time to become aware, to realize what this means for them and their property. Under Section 14-912-01 Purpose, you have low-intensity neighborhood supporting businesses, et cetera. I am unclear what low intensity means. I look to the inspiration for this overlay, Albuquerque. The definition there, and I quote, "Mixed-use low intensity allows for small-scale commercial activities and residential uses to coexist within the same area." In April's meeting with Inglewood Arts, the occupancy for the business was defined to be tiny at 20 people or less. There is a huge difference between home-based no-impact businesses and low intensity. Low intensity means, in my opinion, extra vehicle traffic, public parking, and foot traffic. As I understand it, if this overlay goes into place, then a rezoning meeting for businesses would not need to occur within the residential areas, and neighbors would not be able to protest. Two of my neighbors are very concerned about dispensary-type businesses opening up next door. There is a shop in the Inglewood Zone that sells cannabis and other things. It's relaxed and very unlike the dispensaries that are in commercial strips. These neighbors have a valid concern that a loophole would allow a smaller scale to be sold from a home on her block, perhaps even next door. Who gets to define
One minute.
neighborhood supporting businesses as stated in the purpose of this document? I think of families with children and grandchildren. Would you want that extra public traffic coming to a place of business next door? It sounds great at first until it's an everyday thing. Art gallery homes and small eatery sound nice, but children are playing in yards and riding their bikes in the street. So far, those of I've asked about this have said, "No, absolutely not. I do not want that." People have the right to protest low-intensity rezoning of their homes. As of today, I ask that each property owner rezone their own property for low intensity instead of this huge swath. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Edward Lee is next, and Jeff Ruoff is after Edward.
Hello, my name's Edward Lee. I live at 1900 South Hawthorne Avenue. And I'm not against all of this. I'm against clusters. I'm against some of the other things that they're for, and I would like to clarify something. Is it, is it true that the city has a law against building small houses on empty lots? Is there, is there a law that says that can be done already?
There is a restriction on the size. Currently, homes have to be a certain size to be built.
Well, see, that is a problem. If they, if there's empty lot, they, somebody wants to build a thousand-square-foot house on it, I think the city overreaches too much. That's just like telling me I can't build my garage up higher so I can put a lift in it. No, you, you, you say, "Well, if you build it too high, you're going to make a house out of it." Well, that's why, as far as this gentleman goes, I'm kind of in his side. If he wants to bring his daughter to his property, I think the city oversteps a lot of times. But I'm not, I'm, I'm against clusters. And some of the stuff that happens, if you let somebody build a house in their backyard up on Overton or up on 18th and Hawthorne, it's going to affect my house. I'm already having trouble with the water. I've called the city several times, and my only recourse right now is to stand out in the rain when it's raining. And if it, if it destroys some of my property, then I call stormwater runoff. I've had other people out there from the city, and the city owns nothing except the street. And so they don't want to take any ditches. They don't want to do any of that. So until some of those issues are addressed, I don't know why we're rezoning stuff when I haven't got a, a stormwater runoff or a ditch that takes water two blocks to Hill
One minute.
So, you know, some of this is good, but I'm, I'm against cluster homes, and, and anybody building another house should be responsible for what happens to my house down the road. I mean, if you're going to build a house, I'm going to have twice as much water coming at me, you know? That's it, thanks.
Thank you very much.
Jeff Ruoff is next, and after Jeff is Mike Talcott.
Good evening. My name is Jeff Ruoff. I live at 11503 East 15th Street South. I, my wife and I moved here about four years ago from Fort Lauderdale. Doesn't mean much for our judgment. But, and I don't have the historical background that many of these other speakers have. However, I've got, I think, kind of a practical outlook. We thoroughly enjoy the Inglewood Arts District. Matter of fact, my wife and I, to celebrate our anniversary today, enjoyed fine dining at the Inglewood Cafe. Anyway, Inglewood Arts District is what happens on Winter Road west of Sterling for 10 or 12 blocks. When I look at that map that this action covers, it's approximately 70 times that much space. And almost all of it is internal residential housing. Now, when we talk about commercial development in residential areas, there are two things that it brings to into mind. One is street signage. They're very, you know, whether it's a nursery school, whether it's an art studio, whatever, there's going to be a sign. And the other is cars. And with cars, there's a need for parking. And I don't know streets in my neighborhood that would provide space for the parking. And almost every one of those streets currently has parking on the street. It's a practical impossibility to, to develop much in that kind of an environment unless there were other standards at play. And that's really all I, thank you.
All right, thank you.
Mike Talcott is next, and Brent Shondemeyer is after Mike. Okay, you're, thank you for that, Brent. So after Mike is Mark Hoskins.
Mike Talcott, 1901 South Lake Drive. For the record, I do not live in the proposed district, but I see that this overlay will take away homeowners' property rights and will devalue their homes. And if they get this passed here, it can potentially be done anywhere in the city. As I understand, basically, what the city is trying to do here is, is rezone quiet residential areas to include one large business district. I haven't heard anything tonight about art galleries, home eateries, culinary arts. As I understand, the truth is businesses can be put in right next door, and the homeowners around it will have little or no say or recourse about it. Let us, let's use the example that the house next door becomes a home eatery and quote, "eating and drinking establishment." And even if this requires a special permit, how is the Planning Commission or City Council going to vote that down when the sole purpose of this overlay district is to allow these types of businesses? We've already seen how the City Council ignored the concerns of numerous homeowners, even after a legal protest, and approved an Airbnb in one of these neighborhoods. When my father passed away a few years ago, we had to put his house up for sale. There was a long-term rental next door. Our Realtor said because of that, it would affect his, his home value, and it did. If people are hesitant to purchase a home next to a long-term rental and home values are negatively affected by them, what is going to, what is going to, what's it going to do to property values with a restaurant, Airbnb, art gallery, or even event and venue right next door? These businesses are going to increase traffic in residential neighborhoods, as well as restrict parking spaces for those who live there. What about the lack of sidewalks in these neighborhoods? Are people going to be walking in the street to get to a business or just going through people's front yards? A study was done at the University of Pittsburgh called Danger Zone: The Causal Effects of High Density and Mixed Use Development on Neighborhood Crime. It mentions that mixed-use development can cause disconnect where people can no longer identify who should and shouldn't be there.
One minute.
Mixed use and higher density generate more contact between potential offenders and potential victims. They result in greater transience, anonymity, and moral cynicism among residents, reducing neighborhood collective efficacy. In other words, it erodes the fabric of the traditional neighborhood. So what the city and a few people want to appear to be doing is nuking neighborhoods at the homeowner's expense for the desires of a few. Homeowners within the overlay district will have double the regulations, will gain nothing. Start with a block or two where there's unanimous consent from homeowners. Test it out, and if it's successful, then you could expand it. Perhaps more homeowners would be on board. But the city appears to be greedy and wants to force through a sweeping oppressive plan on a large swath of the city with no impact studies even mentioned. This overlay is a life-changing proposal for over 3,000 homeowners that is taking away their property rights, their voices, home values, safety, most importantly, their peace of mind. Please vote no on the Inglewood Arts Overlay District. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mark Hoskins, and then Angela Carter is after Mark.
Hi, guys. My name is Mark Hoskins, and I live at 1440 South Cedar. I've been in the neighborhood. I actually grew up in the neighborhood, and then I purchased my home from my parents. So it's hard to believe, looking at me, but I've been there for over 50 years. I can tell you right now, the first thing I'd like to say, there's been a lot of kind of vitriol on both sides. I personally would like to see that go away. It's actually possible to have good people on both sides that just fall into opposite sides of the issue. William McLeod spoke earlier. He's against what I have to say here. I grew up with, you always made Billy to me. I grew up with them. They're good people on both sides. I just disagree with what they're trying to do. I, I'm glad that now there are a lot of people talking about the potential of businesses coming into your homes, because until now, it was always ADU, 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 ADU. I'm not even against the ADU part of it. I am against the part that people have working businesses with up to 20 people as they, and I'm hearing that it doesn't affect my value. Well, if my neighbors do that, and there's all this traffic in, that does affect the value of my home. It may not directly affect the taxes, that's true, but it definitely affects the value of my home. I also would like to say, with the arts project, they've revamped the building that was in disarray, the old, the old medical building. That's awesome. I also know at the same time, there were two working businesses at the end of Inglewood that didn't fit with what they wanted, and those, those buildings now sit empty still. Those were viable businesses that were paying taxes to the city, that were providing service to the neighborhood, and they're gone. Still, that's not okay. The other piece is, I heard somebody mention earlier, it's time for the old people
One minute.
step aside. I'm not ready to step aside yet. I also heard earlier that you don't know all the answers when you come in to present something like this. I would like to propose that you might want to know some of the answers. That's all.
Angela Carter's next, and after Angela is Sharon Fisher.
Hi, my name's Angela Carter. Live at 1401 South Roston Avenue. And I would like to thank the Commissioners tonight who have asked for detail, because detail is a lot of what's lacking. I am here today, so many of us are here today, asking for your protection, because that's what we count on you to do. We count on you to ask the questions that you're asking, to get the details. And I'd like to say, those of us here opposed to this, it's not that we're opposed to the Arts District, we love it. I like drag queens, whatever. It, it, it has nothing to do with that. If they want to have that in their area, that's great, but this is overreach. We have followed the rules. We have worked hard. We've worked 12, 14-hour days, two jobs, to buy our houses, not to have somebody else turn them into what they want. These were the houses that were there when they got there. Now they want to change them into something different. And whether it's because they have a dream of creating the crossroads in Independence when there's already one 10 miles away, or it's people who want to invest and make money off of their property, which they could buy property elsewhere instead of changing the properties that are already there, or if it's because of some social or if it's because of some social engineering that they want to cause community interaction. That, there's a, there's nothing wrong with any one of those things. What is wrong is that they are trying to impose that on everybody else. And something that has been grossly represent, misrepresented, community support? I hadn't heard of this. All these community meetings they're talking about? These are in a silo, these are in an echo chamber of the people who work with the arts, uh, organization.
One minute.
They're listening to themselves. Nobody ever talked to me. I never got a notice of a meeting. That's just not true. The people here that I've heard talking, they didn't get a notice of the meeting. We never heard of that. We can't afford to go to an attorney and probably wouldn't have had an attorney. But this is something that people who have a financial interest are helping to drive. There are also people who just have good objectives, and they're great, but they need to confine it to an area where people agree on that. I'm not part of the Inglewood's Art District. I live in a quiet neighborhood, older people. It's not an impoverished dump. It's a nice people, older houses, neighborhood where you can walk, where kids are in the street. We don't want mini apartments called cottage developments. That's not what we want, and we can't sell our houses if it's like that. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Sharon Fisher is up, and Elisa Brighton-Bach is next. Uh, after, after Sharon.
I'm Sharon Fisher. I live at eighteen fifteen South Vassar Avenue. And I live in the Proctor neighborhood. And the neighborhoods that are going to be taken over by the Inglewood's Overlay District are Proctor, which I live in, and also Fairlane, Bristol, and Hill Park. So there are four neighborhoods. Uh, our neighborhood is a very diverse neighborhood. Has lots of different kinds of, um, apartments, uh, multifamily, uh, has a variety of duplexes, almost, a lot of rentals on some of the streets and things. But it is a, a, a very sustainable neighborhood. We do, I do not think that this is a good proposal uh, to have, uh, additional things, just like, uh, the, uh, idea of having a four-hundred-square-foot, uh, house in the backyards that my neighbors, or me, have that. Or I, uh, various, uh, the pod neighborhoods that it's being proposed, three hundred square feet homes, uh, three to twelve in a cluster. No, I don't think that would be helpful for my neighborhood. We already have a variety of housing in our neighborhood. And again, I live in Proctor. The Inglewood Special District that was created is a four-block-long neighborhood, or a district that was supposed to be a business district. It should not be an overlay of an idea. And I think this is an idea that is not necessarily, it's an experiment in our neighborhood. And I don't want that experiment to go wrong. There have been missteps in zoning.
One minute.
In, in two thousand and nine, they wanted everything to be a single-family residential. You can go back and take a look at that one. Uh, in the nineteen fifties, part of the reason why we have so many, uh, family, different kinds of, um, it's not like a regular neighborhoods that you think that are all the same, housing in them. Um, it was supposed to be apartment buildings lining Winter Road. And also, I do not think that there's probably any other neighborhood, whether in Independence, that would accept this kind of an overlay in their, well, with all of Glendale neighborhood. How about different con, different, um, subdivisions? Manor Oaks is an old neighborhood. Would they accept this? Um, you know, think about what you are doing with this.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Elisa Brighton-Bach is up next, and, uh, forgive me. Ruona Nyberg is next.
There you go. That's my husband.
Okay.
My name is Elisa Brighton-Bach, and I live at eleven ten West Walnut Street here in Independence. And I kind of have a question, because I thought that we highlighted a thing where it said, "These didn't have anything to do with HOAs," and then it sounded like someone at the table over here said it did have something to do with HOAs. I mean, does it or doesn't it? I mean,
We'll address that.
Very confusing. Okay, so what I would like to say is all of us have a vision for our city. And all of us love our friends and family right here. We've all worked really hard, and we worked really hard to bring our schools to where they're at right now. We owned a little shopping center here in Independence, and our little shop was called Little Bits that we ran. And we shut our shop down in order to help paint our schools and do what we should as individuals, and we loved that we were able to do that. Many of us oldies have a trust issue with dealing with our city. The first overlay, like that last gentleman said, crushed one of, one of our friends' American Dream by taking his business away from him. He had just put on the lights and everything, and then he was told he was not allowed to open up there. And now today, what is that man doing? He's installing mufflers, 'cause he had his dream completely shattered, just as I have had my dreams shattered by this city in the past. Dreams are very important to all of us. Anyone who's ever opened up a business here understands how hard it is to deal with the city of Independence. It's very difficult and sometimes hopeless, as my family is proof of that. Stress from the city has created such an incredible stress, such an incredible stress that I actually wear a piece of jewelry that's silver. It's in my chest. It's called a pacemaker and a defibrillator. I believe our citizens deserve better. I believe we should all have a voice. I don't have a problem with people building little tiny houses where they'll fit and be, and, and where they might belong. But my neighborhood, there's nowhere to park. I la, I allow people in my neighborhood to park in my, on my property. And everything floods on Truman Road and Twenty-third Street. We almost need a boat to go across. But we're gonna throw six to twelve, three to twelve tiny little houses behind all these other places? It makes no sense to me. Anyway, I just think we all deserve better. We all love our community and our friends, and we all should have a voice. Thank you.
After Ms. Ny, Mr. Nyberg, it's Ron Van Fleet is up.
Hello, my name is Maureen Brighton-Bach, and I live the same place she does, eleven ten West Walnut. I, I'm not a lifelong resident. I've only lived here around twenty years. One of the reasons we moved to, uh, Independence was we bought a condemned house, and we spent our time fixing it up, and now we live in it. That's one way to fix up a neighborhood. The people that are pushing this zoning, I, I have to commend them. They have done some things that are very good. They've worked together. They've helped people buy homes. They've helped bring their neighborhood up. And that's commendable. And the rest of us should be doing the same thing in our neighborhoods. But that doesn't give them the right to come in with an overlay and lay it over this huge district. I have the privilege that I have walked every foot of the streets that we're talking about in this overlay. There is not a foot that I haven't gone and visited. And the one thing I can say from one edge to the other is the city's not real reactive about taking care of the area. The second thing I can say with unequivocal knowledge is it's not equal. One end of the district is one way, another end of the district is another way. There's different money levels on the homes. There's different square footages. And we wanna lay, I, I, you don't put a ten-foot in an eight-foot shoe. We, we need to take the entire area and react to it on an individual basis. We can't, we can't cover it one-size-fits-all. It won't work. Thank you.
Thank you. Next.
After Ron Van Fleet is,
spill it out.
Marjane.
Marjan.
Maureen just spoke.
I just talked.
Oh, okay.
Okay, so.
Ron Van Fleet.
And then Dan Sunderland.
Okay.
After Ron.
Ron Van Fleet, eight hundred North Union Street, Independence. I do not either live in the area directly, but I am involved in an occupation of, uh, real estate that allows me to work with many clients in that area. I have current clients in that area, as well as attending church with others in that area that are involved in the Inglewood Overlay. I did have just some things that have run through my mind as I have pondered what little I know about this. One thing, uh, has been brought up, infrastructure, and I believe that the Community Development Director had indicated that they have already addressed that to some degree. Um, and that would be a case-by-case as to how many little homes were put in, or on the back of a lot, if a little house is put there. Are you, is the city now gonna allow us to tie in sewer lines to that existing home? Water lines to the existing home, power to run off the existing home? Are you gonna have to run, um, a whole new infrastructure from the city, from the street, from the sewer main, from the water main, from the power pole, and run it directly to the house? And the city may take that on a case-by-case basis, I don't know, but that's just something that runs through my head. How is that gonna happen? Is there enough load? City of Independence says there's enough load to handle it, no problem. Is there enough sewer lines, I suppose? But how many is gonna be allowed to be dug up? Next question that runs my mind is, is the house in back, since it is a part of the property and we are not separating the parcel into two tracks, then that means that that is two houses on one lot, basically. Two houses on one lot right now, um, I have had those, and they are extremely difficult to get appraised, because you have to use a like-for-like property. And it makes it difficult to appraise. Eventually, there would be enough that would turn over and flip, that you would have that database there maybe to do it. So that would just be another thing that I'd, hm, how's it gonna work out? Uh, I've heard some things where people have mentioned that, you know, uh, this would create affordable housing. Um, I, I'd really have to weigh that one out. Uh, if you're gonna add that, uh, little house to the back of a lot,
One minute.
that has increased the value of that property, not decreased. And if you put a small house on it, you can't buy the small house separate. It's stuck on one. If you buy a small lot and put a small house on it, then you've accomplished something. Then you have a mini-house on one lot that could be used. Right now, the city has a nine-hundred-square-foot minimum. This is proposing less than that, and it could fit, but you can put a nine-hundred-square-foot home on just about every lot in there. They said there's a hundred and sixty-some-odd vacant lots. I've worked with the Northwest CDC. I worked with Habitat for Humanity in selling homes up there that were new construction. Those new construction homes cost more than they could sell for, even when they had to use MHTC bond money. There is a organization, whether it's, um, Habitat for Humanity or others, that can build on these hundred and sixty vacant lots and put small houses on there without having to do an overlay over the whole area. That would improve the area, that would give houses on those lots.
Time's up.
Thank you.
Thank you.
F. Uh, Dan Sunderland's next, and then Edward Norman is after Dan.
Yes, I'm Dan Sunderland at fifteen oh seven South Logan. I'm actually here for my client, Mike and, or, Mike and, uh, Gail Trainer at twelve twenty-four Cedar. But while I'm here, I can't help but notice, because I've been involved in building, designing, implementing the ADUs, tiny home and mixed-use properties all over the country to some degree or another. And it sounds good. But one thing keeps coming in my mind is that you cannot control ownership unless you're gonna control ownership. Everybody says, "Well, we want owners to, we want owners to be the only one that can do this for their property." Then they sell the property, and you can't keep a corporation burn, buying that piece of property unless you're gonna try to implement some kind of thing, says corporations can't do that. Who's gonna develop these, uh, clusters? Whatever the case is, and I think they're great for a, a vision purpose. The problem is, just like Kansas City, has turned it into a homeless encampment and things like that, which you take what could be good, where everybody has a dream, and they, they do their yard, and they take care of all the maintenance, and they walk the streets with their dog, isn't reality, 'cause what happens is the worst-case situation every time. You wanna think, okay, only people would move in here would be those who love the city, want to be there, walk the streets, do all that stuff over and over again. And a corporation comes in and buys it and turns them all into rentals. Now, I agree with the size restrictions and the city and all the problems that go with that, because, you know, trying to build something outside the, the norm is an uphill battle. It can be done.
One minute.
There's channels, you know, everybody goes to, to, uh, special use, you know, the Board of Adjustments, and they look at, uh, single-use situations. And that's what should be done here, not an overlay. And that's all I have to say.
All right, thank you.
Edward Norman is next, and Paula Thomas is after Edward.
Edward Norman, eighteen oh eight South Cedar Avenue. I'd like to begin by saying I love Inglewood. Uh, I saw Shannon Doy at the theater there when I was a very small boy. Uh, Dr. Saunders, uh, was my doctor when I was born. Uh, he had an office there upstairs in Inglewood. I was always sorry to see what happened to Inglewood. Of course, it happened to all the shopping districts in Independence. I bought a house, uh, my house, eight years ago, and I was really sad to hear all this talk about grassroots. And no one approached me about the overlay. I never heard anything about it. And all the property values just decreasing. Now, I bought my house for fifty thousand dollars. It's worth a hundred and fifty thousand dollars now. I don't think that anything that this grassroots effort, I don't think it had anything to do with it. Uh, property values are increasing all over the city. And this, these communities, these small communities, uh, oh, yes, they absolutely have HOAs. All the porches have to be exactly the same size. And there will be community sheds that have tools, uh, gardening tools, 'cause they want to, community gardens and, uh, uh, pizza ovens and, um, or fireplaces and playgrounds for the children. And there's nothing said about what will happen when tools are lost or broken or stolen. Who will replace them? Who will be in charge of that, if not an HOA? Um, that's just skipped over. It's like it's not been thought through. Or, "Well, let's not worry about it right now. We'll worry about that later." But I'll tell you this, unless they have eminent domain, they're not getting my house, I'm gonna live there till I die. Unless they give me a million dollars for it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Paula Thomas is next, and after Paula is, Wathena?
Wathena, yes. Thurman.
Wathena Thurman.
Is after.
Good evening. My name is Paula Thomas. I live at twenty-one twenty-one South Sterling Avenue. And I haven't heard one person bring up the historical district. I am the block. We are the block. We are the block. We have cluster homes all around us. They're called duplexes. And we have had so much crime that I have had sheriffs' vehicles parked around the corner just waiting for the crime to leave, as I gave him a thumbs up, trying to walk my dog in a safe area. We live in a home that is known to be the oldest standing mansion west of the Mississippi. It is a historical landmark. I do care what happens to our property, and I care what goes on around our property. We already have a homeless problem. We already have crime that we can't even call the police on half the time because they're too busy doing other things to come and eradicate the people who are building a fire under one of our areas or sleeping in there. Now, as much as I like art, I am an artist, but I'm not part of the Inglewood art area. And I don't have a problem with them enhancing their area. In fact, I miss going to the movie theater there at the Inglewood Theater.
No, I don't.
Very comfortable seats. But I do have a problem with people saying that our property taxes won't go up. You know, I heard tonight already from the committee, someone, that said an ADU will increase your value. Well, if it increases your value, that means your property taxes are going to go up too. So, we have Section Eight rentals around us. I don't have a problem with renting. I used to rent when I was just starting out. But I do have a problem with this type of things. There's no one who can convince me that down the road, even with control...
One minute.
...that something is going to be sold, and that control will be out of our hands, and we will now have a blight on our hands.
Tina Thurman. All right. Mary Wilcox. And after Mary would be Mark Chisa. Chisa? Pardon?
Mary Wilcox, eighteen seven oh seven East Twenty-Eighth Street, South. I am an affected homeowner. I don't live on that property, but I've owned it for twenty years. I have six pages of contradictions. We've been trying to get answers from the applicants, just the two women, basically, because that's the two we ran into. I would like to point out that if indeed you guys are working with the correct document, we, the public, haven't seen it yet. And they also told us Sunday night, Teresa and Tammy, that there is a fifth document. So we haven't seen, actually, I haven't seen number four or number five. So much of what I wrote here, I have no idea if it's still in effect. One of the things that we learned early on was that we all get to have little businesses in our houses, and we can have an eatery with six, no, three tables, six to twelve people, but it's not going to cause any traffic or anything to disrupt the people that don't want to have a restaurant in their house. One of the big things that bothers me is they keep going back to the aging in place. Well, if you own your home, and you're, I'm sixty-five, I'm a senior, you own your home in Inglewood, then you need to build yourself an ADU because you can't handle your home anymore. So you move in the backyard, and then what do you do? Rent your house out or just let it deteriorate? Or, I mean, how many people, how many seniors do you know that want to do that and get into their nest egg to build an ADU so they can age in place? But there are so many contradictions, and the Sunday night meeting, it was just video of those two answering questions, and they changed everything. It was businesses, and now they're just going to concentrate on ADUs. Well, Lee Summit came up with this overlay issue, I'm so sorry, and last year, they just plain made an ordinance that the whole city can have ADUs. There's nothing they've mentioned here that needs an overlay. It is unconstitutional, in my book, for them to overlay my property and place more restrictions on my property, and that is the definition of the overlay, is more restrictions, additional restrictions. It's in the actual, and they've got ten pages...
Time's up.
...of those restrictions. Okay. I'm going to post my stuff on the screen.
Is there a Mac or a Mark Chisa?
I have nothing to add.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Maybe Ballin or Bobbin or Bryant?
Bobby.
Bobby. Sorry about that, Bobby. After Bobby, Kristi Nichols.
Okay. I'm Bobby Bryant. I actually live at thirty-two oh one Queen Ridge Drive, but I've been a citizen of Independence for fifty-seven years. I remember going to Inglewood, Five and Dime, Ben Franklin, stuff like that. But I want to talk about practicality, because there's some practical issues that are not being considered. I have worked in utilities for thirty years, and I will tell you this, they told you you had capacity? That's true. We have capacity. We might not have the right infrastructure to get it to these new homes without voltage drops, and we might not have backups on our power so that if we drop, we have an alternative to pick it up. On water, if you run, the people buying the home will be responsible for taking it from the house to the main trunk. But if they don't increase the main trunk size, you will lose capacity. You will lose water pressure. You might not be able to flush your toilet. Okay? If they don't do the same thing with your sewers, you could have backups. For every house you add, you add roofs and stuff, which makes water flow faster. And then we're talking about the storm drains, okay? Well, if we don't increase the capacity on the storm drains, we will have flooding. I've seen that for years. Another thing that bothers me is, as close as these houses can be, all right, what about fire? A lot of people, you know, you have fire on one five-foot, it can jump. It can jump really easy, all right? And then, if you have one parking spot, but you have two cars, and one's on the street, and...
One minute.
...there's a fire, it is almost impossible to get down that street with the police cars or the fire trucks, and then you get down there and you have no water pressure? Okay? This hasn't been thought out completely, all right? Go back, do a pilot project. Do something very small, because you're not going to change all this stuff tomorrow. Right now, transformers and stuff, three to four years out, equipment for all this stuff, four to five years out. It takes six to seven years to start a project and see it through, and you have to do it in pieces. You're not going to do this overlay in one shot. There's absolutely no way. So it is not practical. Okay? Thanks.
Kristi Nichols. After Kristi is...
Kristi Nichols.
Steve Williams.
I live at one seven four oh seven East Forty-third Terrace Court, South in Independence. I have been here since six o'clock, listening to those that are in favor and now those that are against this overlay. What I found, and I appreciate the chairs that have asked questions about the details that are missing in this. I've lived in Independence for ten years. I can tell you that these cottage communities trying to build this, one person brought up that we have problems with homelessness of these people moving into these smaller cottages. Also, we have over seventy thousand illegals that are in Missouri. You want to think about that. In my neighborhood, they built luxury apartments that they got passed by the city. They can't fill them, and we have illegals that are moving in to those apartments because they're funding by the government. Individuals deserve their own individual property rights, and they deserve to be able to make a petition if they want to build an outback building, a garage, that's on an individual basis. This overlay overlays all of these districts, these people that were not properly informed according to the city ordinances about what was happening. They've mentioned time and time again that we had community meetings, community, community, community. I'd like to know how many people were in this community meeting, and I'd like to know of these thirty-seven homes, thirty-seven hundred homes that are going to be affected, what the proportion was attending your community meetings. I think that this has been grossly overstated. I think that it has, the details have been left out over and over again, and I think that what you're doing is you're taking away people's personal property rights, and you are devaluing their property. And you're just, and you're letting one small group of people decide for a large group of people in an experiment, what's going to happen to their personal property. One minute. And we need to stand for our own individual property rights. I've been part of the grassroots movement protecting personal property rights. It's a great grassroots movement's efforts in our constitutional rights, and we need to stand up for those rights. And this is what, this is why we had an overflow crowd standing out there, coming and having a big crowd that was in resistance to this so-called few people that had this dream and this idea to take over the majority of people's personal property rights and make that decision for them. Thank you.
Thank you. Please, we're...
Steve Williams. After Steve is Jeannie Davis.
My name is Steve Williams. I live at nine oh eight West Maple here in Independence, Missouri. First of all, I just want to thank the commission for all the work that you guys do to oversee what people do with their properties, because as some said before, you should have no right to do so, and I totally disagree with that. I think you have the right to make decisions on what needs to be in place in certain areas and what shouldn't be in place in certain areas. I'd also like to honor those who have volunteered in the Arch District and those who have participated in that, and I appreciate the efforts they have more than anyone could ever imagine. Also, Habitat for Humanity has been such a great partnership in many ways with the City of Independence and helping the city along the way. I'd just like to make a few points, just to remind you of some of the statistics that are important for you to keep in mind. As was mentioned before, there's nearly four thousand homes in this area, right? The 2023 census of Independence, Missouri, was a hundred and twenty-two thousand people in the City of Independence with a land mass of seventy-eight point two-five square miles. You multiply that out, that's one thousand five hundred and sixty-two, roughly, somewhere in there, people per square mile. This area that's being affected is two point two-five square miles, okay? That would be the equivalent of thirty-five hundred people resident, individuals, living in that area, because the census also says we have two point two-five people per household in the City of Independence. So when you look at that, this area should have the equivalent of thirty-five hundred people living in this area. But it has, at two point two-five, the number of households is roughly nine thousand people living in this area. That's according to the census of 2023. This is a very dense neighborhood. People can say, we have space in this area to work with and grow, and I am the first to say that I believe that we should be figuring out ways, this commission, the city council, and people in this community should be figuring out ways to infill these properties and make it more attractive. I live sixteen hundred feet east of this, in an area that this city and this commission deemed that they would take all of the homes in this area and take them back to single-family homes. You guys set that up, just sixteen hundred feet away from this area that you're proposing duplicating and having more people in this area. My home had eleven apartments in it. You guys and the city required that I take that back to single-family, which I did willingly, along with six other homes that I did as a general contractor in this area to take these back to single-family homes. That's what we should be finding out ways to take these communities, get single-family residents in each one of them, and forget this stuff about making duplexes, which is really what we're talking about. Could you imagine doubling the number of people in this area, number of homes in this area, to eight thousand? Come on. Seriously? That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you.
Jeannie Davis.
You're none.
Jeannie Davis. Pardon?
Davis or Dennis?
I'm sorry. Dennis.
Thank you.
Excuse me.
I've been called Davis many times.
I'm sorry about that.
I am Jeannie Dennis. I have, I live at seventeen zero three South Ash Avenue. I've lived there since nineteen eighty-seven. It's my starter home, which has turned into my final home, because I could never find any place that I loved any better than my little home. When my husband joined me, he loved the home and did everything he could to improve it, hoping that the neighborhood would improve in turn. One of the best things that Independence ever did, and I don't know if it's still enacted, was the tax abatement. And we tried to take full advantage of that and made improvements, further improvements to the home. I am stopped every time I am outside, people stop and tell me how nice my home is, and I'm hoping that that attitude would be passed along. My husband, who was a remodeler contractor, had a dream of taking the little homes, all the little homes in the area that were rundown, buying them as they came up and wanting to flip them, and finding a way to finance for young families to come in and grow the neighborhood with the homes that already are there, that are in such need of repair. When I walk the streets, which I have for almost fifty years, what I notice, you can walk down one block, and every home is beautiful, and people take pride in how their home looks. You go around the corner and come down the next, and it is...
One minute.
...trashed homes and rundown homes. I don't mind the vacant lots. What we need to do is find an incentive for flippers to come in, encourage people to rehab these homes, and make them good homes for families, and grow our neighborhood that way. We don't need anymore people in this square footage like they have talked about before. We need to improve what we have and make out-of-town landlords accountable. That is the biggest problem in Independence and has been from the time I moved in. Unaccountable, bad codes enforcement. You walk through my neighborhood, and it's just a disgrace. There is no on-street parking...
Time's up.
...only for one half of the homes.
All right. Thank you.
Patty Allred.
Hello, I'm Patty Allred. I live on, at eighteen nineteen South Clermont, literally a block from Inglewood. So I am right there. We actually moved here from Texas two years ago, and we bought that house. It was a rehabbed house. Our block is beautiful. We only had one home that wasn't rehabbed, and it is being rehabbed right now. So our, and it's a nice, quiet place, but talking about the infrastructure issues, we have problems with parking already, even though every single home in our neighborhood is a single-family... is a single-family dwelling on our street. And even so, we have problems with having to park in the street because there's not enough parking. And just the other day, there was a bus out there blowing its horn because it was trying to get down the street to deliver the children to wherever they needed to go and couldn't get down the road because there wasn't space because of the parking that was happening on the road already in our neighborhood. And we are in a neighborhood where most of our, most of our houses are on half-acre lots. So this would be the prime place to put the ADUs, but where are you going to put the parking? Because it's already not there. We also don't have sidewalks. There's no additional space to take for parking. There's just nothing there, because most of the yard is the backyard. You can't take away the front yard. There's not that much of a front yard to take away. The other thing I wanted to say is just like so many, I'm going to make this really quick because you guys, you, I love the indulgence. Thank you. I know you're exhausted. But I was just going to say, the other thing that worries me is how grassroots is this really? My little old lady neighbor is the one that told me about it a few days ago. I had not heard anything about this until a few days ago. And then the neighbors next to them, they are a multi-generational family, a Hispanic family-
One minute.
-and they hadn't heard either. And so we knew nothing about it. And then the other thing I'd say about grassroots, and I will tell you, I do support what Inglewood is doing with arts. My boys have even performed there because they're into music. But I do worry about agendas that they might be pushing and how grassroots those agendas really are, because I know, like with the drag thing they do, if you look at the poster, there's a lot of alphabet soup organizations there that are not grassroots. They are national organizations. So what are these agendas? But I do support the arts and what they're doing in that regard. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Gwen, name starts with a T, last name starts with a T. Lives at 611 South Fuller. Okay. Lysinda Johnson.
I'm Lysinda Johnson. I'm at 1218 South Cunningham Avenue, and I moved here from Utah four years ago, and I have never heard of anybody rezoning an area. I don't understand why we are doing this. I don't want anyone over my property rights or any of the residents of homeowners here. I'm for you all, and I am protesting against this. I don't think it's a good idea. My property is not for rezoning, and this is my right and my choice, and anybody else here that is against this proposal, that I don't think is a good thing. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Is there anyone who did not sign up that wanted to speak in opposition? I'm going to go ahead and have you line up. We need to take a two-minute break. We're going to adjourn for two minutes. Did everybody in the line to speak get sworn in?
Yes.
I did not.
All right. If you did not, please raise your right hand. Do you promise to tell the truth to the best of your ability?
Yes.
Thank you. All right, we're going to go ahead and re-engage this hearing. I'm going to reiterate, since none of you had signed up, you still have your time to speak, but if somebody has said something that you've already heard and that you agree with, just say you agree so that we can move forward with the rest of the hearing. Thank you. State your name and your address.
My name is Carl Blair. My residence is 2201 South Overton Avenue. True diversity, that's where I'm speaking here. I, I got my house as a remodel too, and Habitat for Humanity didn't have a program. When they had a program, I didn't fit in.
Sir, I need you to only address me and talk into the mic.
Okay. Habitat for Humanity had a program that didn't fit me, but I moved into a rehab, and they have a program called Brush with Kindness. I've been in my house for 10 years, single dad, two boys, okay? Nesbit, Ashburn, Young, and Virginia. You, you're asking the right questions, okay? This plan that they're proposing isn't what they seem. Because see, here's the thing. The state representative has already okayed the backyard housing for the grandparents and mothers and stuff. The issue that we're having is the rezoning of my residence. So we're, because see, what I did, what I did, I went down to Inglewood. I went in some of the shops, and it's like, oh, you can open your own business. You can have a pot shop. You can have a floral. You can open up a restaurant. That's what they're selling. That's, that's the truth. So I'm, I don't want to live next door to a pot shop. I don't want to live next door to a junker. I don't want to live next door to a garage, a guy that's working on cars, okay? And that's what this rezoning will allow, okay? We already, in Independence, are short the resources to come and investigate all of these types of things because they're already going on in our neighborhoods. My neighborhood has Muslim. My neighborhood has Hispanic. My neighborhood has me, okay? It's very diverse, okay? And what makes me feel good is when I come home from work and I see kids playing in the street. When they're playing in the street, I say, "This is where these children is going to grow up, and I'm going to turn over my house to them." That's what we're going to do.
One minute.
Virginia, you know, look at these gray hairs. They've been in these houses for a long time. They ain't trying to move out because their neighbor's running a pot shop. They don't want to move out because they, they, there's a auto mechanic shop right next door. I love our district. Stay there, but don't come into my neighborhood. My neighborhood is zoned for what? Residential. Live with me. See how I live. And I have one neighborhood neighbor, guess what? He was a renter. I went to him, I said, "Hey, man, these people, all of my neighborhood on this, on this street, we want people that's going to stay." You know what he did? He rented that house. He moved his daughter in that house. My hope, they love me on my street. They really do. They love me, okay? We had drug addicts. I ran them off. I got with the police and they ran them out. I was sitting, I told the police, "Sit on my, sit in the driveway," and they caught them all. But this is a neighborhood that I've been working for, working with, and I don't want it to be disma, dis-
Time's up.
-morphed into a business district where you can do anything.
All right, thank you.
You can go anywhere. Thank you for the time that you allowed me to share. Keep asking those questions.
Angelika Skulovic. Address is 10724 East 19th Terrace. I also has not, have not been approached-
Angela, can you move the microphone down?
Down.
Down one level. Just put, there you go.
Okay. I also have not been approached by anyone regarding the overlay. I just got this letter a couple weeks ago. My parents also live in the area. They have not had anyone approach them either, so I'm here to find a lot of information about what it is, how it's going to affect us. I've heard a lot of good information. Some of it still hasn't addressed, like all the councilman's questions are, you know, who's going to run the cottage areas? That's fine. They don't know. We'll find out maybe later. As far as the ADUs, as the homeowner, and I have an ADU in back, I'm now a landlord. Am I going to be subject to the Independence Rental Ready Program? Do I have to register? Am I subject to health and safety inspections? You know, Missouri is a very tenant-friendly state. It's very hard to get a problem tenant out of your property. It's also very expensive. And even though we're sold this whole, oh, you can move your family in, maybe some friends, or maybe make some quick cash by having a tenant, it's very expensive. There's a lot of legalities that I don't think a lot of my fellow neighbors have any experience with or that know. They also have to get an attorney to write some legal leases for the protection of the tenant as well. So there's some other detailed information like that, that I would like to know what the city would implement if we did pass the overlay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Fred King. I live at 2006 South Vermont, and I think Nesbit hit it right on the head. This should have been stopped four hours ago. And the thing of it is, they boast about how much money they've gathered and what they've done in Inglewood so far. Just yesterday on the internet, it said the people that own the theater don't have enough money to renovate it and get it ready to use. Yet they want to spend all this other money buying whatever it's going to take to do this overlay. They ran two businesses out of Inglewood. Those buildings are certainly empty, as the lady said. And so why don't they take this $4 million that they've gathered up and fix Inglewood and leave the rest of it alone? We don't need to go out to Chrisler and the 23rd Street and Truman Road and on, and get more things going when they don't even have Inglewood taken care of yet.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Carla Jones. I live at 1920 South Hardy Avenue. I moved to Independence in 1986 and have spent most of the time in or around the proposed overlay. My children went to Proctor Elementary, where I volunteered for years. I don't need an overlay district to tell me to be nice to my neighbors. I know my neighbors. We, we have our relationships. We know each other very well. I can walk my street and I feel safe. I don't need the overlay district to do that for me. I also have two questions. When Tom here was doing the proposal, he stated that the AUD or ADU would be a good way to increase your income, and yet you can't use it as an Airbnb. So how is the income going to be increased? And another issue I have is nobody has stated who's going to oversee the EAOD. There's no answers to that.
Okay, we'll address that in another portion.
Hi, Jennifer Maro, 1402 West Walnut Street. The letter dated July 29th, and I received that letter from the Inglewood Arch District on August 5th. I was not given adequate time to research other cities for the auxiliary dwelling units. I did not have adequate time. 22 days is not enough time for my full-time job to research in-depth what I like to research. It's not fair that I did not find out about this before 22 days. Also, finding out on the 20, 2023, finding out that this was not passed then, and it brought up again, I didn't know about it on the, in the 2023 school, or school year, sorry. 2023, I didn't know about this. I didn't know about this until 22 days ago. It's not fair. It's deceptive, and I don't support deceptive behaviors. And knowing, finding out tonight that all of these different things on all these different papers is deceitful, and I don't follow deceitful behavior. And this is my property that I've lived in eight years, and I've lived in Independence since '92. I need to know information. I need to research information, and 22 days is not adequate enough time to find that information out. Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Hello, my name is Tom Trudeau. I live at 1901 South Ralston Avenue, within the zone. A couple of things. I mean, I agree a lot with the disagreement, and I understand the people for the yes side. I understand wanting to, you know, better the community what they say, but- better the community what they say, but, I mean, I live in a community, I mean, I go to church. My wife, she's Hispanic. She's in the back there. But I've been here for over 22 years, 21, 22 years. I've raised my whole family here, within the zones that they are now. But, you know, I have a diverse neighborhood, black, white, Hispanic. There's straight people, people of, you know, different persuasions. And I live right down the street, obviously, from Inglewood. And I go and I do shopping there, and I don't have a problem with the people there. But, you know, there are things we need to fix, obviously, in the city. You know, the way you say that we need to refix how these small houses are zoned. Okay, let's fix that. Let's fix these things. But I don't think we need to do an overlay to fix it. I think we just need to go for you guys. You guys are the smart guys in the room, right? You get to make the decisions. Well, I mean, you're going to make the decisions, at least. So, you know, we should fix these things. If this zoning problem is the fact that we can't build these things, well, can we fix that and make it so we can build those things? Instead of these people having to come to you and say, we need an overlay of this whole area. Okay, well, why don't you just, you know, make it so we can fix it? And, you know, make it easier for people to build a small house. Or if they want to build, you know, these cottages, make it easier for them to do it. Instead of, you know, them having to come to us and then having us all be upset about this. Like you said, they're saying, well, people that don't want it can do whatever they want. But we're still under that umbrella of the zone. And who's to say that something won't change down the line in the zone?
One minute.
You know, I fly an American flag outside of my house. I believe in the American way. I believe in God. I'm, you know, I'm a Christian. And I believe that, in my heart, that, you know, God wants me to come up here and talk to you. I don't normally get up in front of anybody, you know? But I feel like to say, yes, it's a great idea, is to say, well, I'm giving up my God-given right in this country to, you know, fly my flag and have my freedom, make my own decision, and to put that umbrella over it. I wanted to read from Proverbs real quick. Proverbs 3 says, "Trust in the Lord with all your heart and lean on your own understanding in all the ways. Submit to him and he will make right your paths." And that's all I have to say. God bless.
Hi, my name's Sam Wade, 1216 South Cunningham Avenue. I lived in Independence all my life, maybe 69 years. I bought my house back in 1974, and I still live there today. And when I come in earlier and I asked the lady how that was going to affect my property, and I gave her the address and told her, and she said, it's not. It's not going to affect you at all. Then I thought to myself, if it's not going to affect me, why did I get a letter to come up here and be concerned about my property? And my property is not residential. It is like manufacturing, which is right off of Truman Road. So my property has more value to me than the residential part of the houses on the street. And there's five houses, and only three of us have been there for a while. And like I said, I've been there since '74. I've raised my kids. I've had a business, a wood cabinet shop. So I've been there for a long time. My property is also grandfathered in. So my other question was, how does the grandfather on property like this going to affect anything else that happens down the road? And these businesses out on Truman Road that have been there for a while and established, and they want to do away with these, like Ryan's Car, that's where I take my car to get work. They used to take it at CNC Auto, which is right there by QuickTrip. But QuickTrip got so big, they decided they needed his land. And all the businesses that have been in there and established, and this project wants to do away with them, something's wrong. We're here, we started a business. We want the business to survive, be profitable, and live our life in a heritage. And some of these businesses that are owned-
One minute.
-will be passed on down to their kids. So where does that put them at this point in life right now? I have a lot of complaints about the city, but I learned that I never buy a house at the end of the street because you live with all the water that comes off the street. You live with all the water that comes off of Truman Road, and it eats out your backyard. And they say, don't do nothing to it. You got to get an engineer. But it's not my responsibility to fix what's supposed to be provided by the city. And that's all I have to say.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, it looks like I'm the last one. All right. So my name's Laura Arnote. I live at 1925 South Willow Avenue in Independence, Missouri. I wasn't going to come up and speak, but I wanted to show my kids that when there's issues in the community, we all need to come together and talk about them. And while I do think that it's not a bad idea for the rezoning, or the little houses, anyway, an issue I haven't heard was about IPL. And they're being able to, you did address that they said that they could handle the load. However, IPL does not make their own electricity. They have to buy it from KCPL. So when they have to buy more electricity, does that mean our bills go up even more than they already are? Because I know my bills are pretty astronomical, especially during the summer. So that's an issue I am concerned about. And there's just not enough space for all these little houses in our neighborhood. I live on South Willow Avenue. There's no, we already got people parking on the streets. We already have problems with fire trucks, school buses, being able to get down these streets without the extra people that are going to be added to this. So that's all I need to say.
All right, thank you. All right, I'm going to give it one more shot. Anybody who has not spoken in opposition? Okay, have you been sworn in?
Yes.
Okay, state your name and address.
My name's Lamont Chestnut. I live at 1011 South Woodland Avenue, here in Independence. I've been around Independence for the biggest part of my life. And I really don't understand why somebody can come in and tell you what you can and cannot do with your property. That's not right. I mean, I bought it. I keep it up. Now they're going to come in and tell me what I can and can't do? That's not fair. I've got neighbors that sit back and they're saying that they don't want to get into it. So I mean, it's up to you guys to either pass it or veto it. I prefer you to veto it until they come up with something a little better. Don't get me wrong. They have some good ideals. But come on. I mean, you're starting with a big area when it should be a smaller to find out if it's going to work. And that's all I got to say.
All right, thank you. Have you been sworn in? Do you promise to tell the truth to the best of your ability?
Yes.
State your name and address.
My name, my name is Lucy Trudeau. I live in 1901 South Ralston Avenue, 64052. I have 22 years there. And I am opposed. I represent, somebody asked if some Latinos representing, but I think we're United States of America. I am a citizen. And I think if, looking, all, everybody say those who oppose, I think you need to think about that. Because it's just look like beautiful, but it's a lot of problems. Somebody say, what is danger? Where you can see the danger? That is the danger, all they say. And I think, I think, need to, I think, even though not, don't need to go more far that plan. If they want to work with business, they can work with business. If they want to help people, they can help them without, do all these things. Can affect us later. Maybe they say no, but I feel that will affect us all later. That's all I can say. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. All right, I'd like to call the applicant back up, or the applicant's responsible parties. All right, this is the opportunity to address anything you've heard from those in opposition and respond to anything.
Thank you. Yeah, and actually, I want to thank those that all spoke tonight on both sides. We are a community nonprofit founded by the community, so we want to hear the pros and the cons. And so the encouraging thing I have to say is, of all the cons I heard the folks that were opposed to it, this document doesn't really address any of those things for the most part. And so I'll kind of hit the highlights. I'd love to address every single one individually, but I want to address the highlights. First of all, for those that said they're just learning about it, I apologize because we did, this happened a year ago, and there was mailers that went out last year. And a lot of the folks that are here tonight-
Next outburst, I will have you removed. It's not a promise, or that is a promise? Thank you.
So I believe that many people here tonight didn't, maybe didn't get those notices last year, but I know that there's many people that are here tonight that said they didn't get the notices and they were here last year. So I don't know how to explain that, but obviously, this isn't new information. And in that time, we've had six town hall meetings where we've sent out mailers, so. So there's that. The neighborhood businesses are not part of this document. So those that are concerned about having an eatery in their home or next to their home, this document doesn't address those. And I apologize for the confusion because at one point, early in the discussion, there was an element to a home-based business, but this doesn't address that. So we can set, all of the folks that spoke about businesses and interrupting their home, we can set that aside because this document does not address that. And then the overlay does require off-street parking. So if you're having a cottage community, this is not going to create extra traffic in the, on the streets because you do have to have a plan that includes parking just the way that your home should have a driveway that you can pull into. And then as far as, you know, this being an experiment, this is not new information or new ideas. These are practices that are happening in other cities, some just around the metro and some as far as way as Seattle. So we've spent years researching this and looking for a plan. And then as far as utilities, I think we've addressed the utilities. It's the utilities' responsibility to make sure that they're providing good service to their customers. But I think the important thing to understand is, we're talking about doubling the density. I don't think that's going to happen. It would have the potential to, but is every, we already have heard from a large group of people that don't want to participate in this, well, we know that they're not going to add to the density, right? So we can already deduct that, you know, from these folks that are here tonight, they're not going to add to the density. So that shouldn't be a problem. And it's going to take years to increase density as well as upgrade your utilities, which I would hope everybody will want and need over the years. If you're going to get your utilities upgraded, which I know Spire is working on new gas lines in Inglewood right now, that's a good thing. You're getting new services. You know, the breakdown of the water systems and things are because they're not getting serviced. If you want to service them, then create a need for them to do so. And then lastly, I'll just address that the rules, we're not taking anything away from anyone. We're just giving people more options to do something should they want to. So it's disheartening to hear people say that it's going to take away my rights. This doesn't take away anyone's rights. You can choose to not participate and do nothing. And so we'll leave that there. And then lastly, I'll just say, we welcome folks. This is a solution to community improvement. The folks that you heard speak in favor and those that all stood up tonight were there to help brainstorm and build this idea. I would encourage those that oppose, they've had an opportunity to read the document, read the document, and then give feedback and get involved, and offer a different solution. But no other solutions have been brought forward. And if this doesn't pass, then what other solutions and who's going to lead those, if not us? So I'm going to stop there and I'll turn it over to any of our other colleagues.
Hi there. So I'm not going to add too much to that because it would be repeating, and we've all been here for a long time. So I definitely concur with what Michael shared with you all. One note I do want to make is there's been conversation about different versions of the document. And the reason that has happened is because this has been an ongoing project for many years that includes input and feedback. So as we've received input and feedback, we have made those modifications to the document in response to show that we are interested in feedback and input from the community. So that is why there has been different renditions of the document. Thank you.
So again, I think we've probably addressed most of the questions that have come up that we've heard tonight. So I just want to really close this with kind of a restatement of what this is. This is an opportunity to provide more options to property owners. So again, I think there's a lot of agreement in this room tonight from both the, those who were in favor and those who are against, because I think we heard a lot of the same things. Don't take my rights away from me. That's exactly what we're saying. Don't take rights away. Give rights back. Give rights back to do some additional things with your property, such as build an ADU if that works on that piece of property, such as purchasing one of these vacant lots and building a home on it and chase your American dream. Let's keep in mind that we heard tonight that there was approximately 165 vacant lots in this area. We've heard a lot of talk about how this is going to exacerbate the infrastructure of the community. There were 165 other homes that were in this, in this area that have been torn down. Those are, that's an opportunity to replace those homes. We're not adding to that density. We're just putting some of the density back that was taken away. Finally, this allows for, in appropriate areas, for some cluster neighborhood development. And we've heard a lot about, a lot of talk about, well, who's going to control that? Well, that's going to be controlled like any other development because it's going to come through the process pursuant to a development plan that's going to have to be presented, following all the rules and regulations that are currently in the city code. Those regulations will also deal with who's going to control the maintenance of public, or the common area, to the extent there is any common area. That will be, that will be handled. If we're talking about cluster neighborhood areas that might have three houses, well, maybe three homes are going to get together and do that, and they're not, they don't have to form, yet again, another additional entity. Or maybe it's going to be six to nine homes at that point. Maybe that's appropriate for an HOA to handle that particular issue. But those are things that have to be dealt with when those development plans are brought forward, to the extent that any are brought forward. I think with that, unless there are any other questions or comments, we're not dealing with the home business issue, and perhaps Tom can speak to that. This ordinance doesn't deal with it. It deals with three things. This ordinance doesn't deal with it. Deals with three things: ADU, small home, and cluster development. Thank you.
Anything else? Any additional questions from commissioners to the applicant?
Yes, Chair.
Go ahead.
As to the low-cost homes, what are our values that you think you're going to bring a house down to in this area?
I don't understand the question.
Well, you're saying low-cost homes. What value are you going to put on these homes that you're building or bringing down?
I didn't say low-cost homes. We said smaller homes under 1,000 square feet.
Okay, what's the cost?
So it's up to the builder to decide what cost the home is.
What's what's the cost going to be? Do you have no idea?
Sure. We have a plan for a home that we showed today, and it was $180,000 build. Which, which by the way, hang on, which by the way, which by the way, pre-COVID, that same plan was $90,000. So there, you know, if you want to talk about affordable housing, the new homes that are 1,200 square feet that a lot of the minimum requirements are for zoning start at 330,000. So we've done the homework to understand what a new cost build is, and a 1,200 to 1,400 square foot home is $330,000. That is definitely not affordable. We are bringing that price down, but new housing is is not easily accessible. And that right now, I don't know any developers building homes under $400,000 new.
Okay. That I mean, that's fine. So you're saying 180. That that sounds reasonable. I mean, that's what since what today houses are. That's a 900-square-foot house or 1,000-square-foot house?
It's 900, 900 square foot.
900-square-foot house, okay. My next question is going to be the notices that you sent out for community meetings. How did you send those out?
They were posted on social media. They were sent through the mail, and they were put on our website.
Okay, so you said social media.
And in our newsletter, which has 2,500 subscribers.
Okay. Those 2,500 subscribers live in this area?
Not all of them, no.
Okay. Social media. Does everybody have social media and get this stuff? No, I'm asking him, guys. I'm not asking you. And?
We did mail out postcards.
Yeah.
You mailed out what?
We did mail out postcards to every address in this overlay.
Well, you're lying right there, because I own two houses in this area, and I did not get one.
We we don't have.
No, no, I'm just flat out telling you. You guys did. I didn't get one.
I'm sorry you didn't, but we don't have control over the mail, but we did have a mailing list.
Two houses?
Okay. That's really inappropriate. I'm under oath and I'm not lying.
Chairman Nesbitt, stop.
I am not lying. I have the record from corporate copy print. We sent in the postcards. We sent in the addresses, and they mailed it out. If you did not receive those postcards, that is out of our handsets on the mailing system.
Chair.
But I would not lie about that. Thank you.
Point of order. I I actually disagree with it. That's not your fault. It's your responsibility, if you're going to make a change to something or propose a change, that people need to be notified. I own a house in the area, too. Guess what? I didn't get it either. Okay, and I and I know I've talked to a lot of people. I also own a business in the area. Didn't get it there either. So there's a lot of information that didn't go out. You haven't communicated it well, as which I think you heard to the to the double amount of people who are opposed to it tonight, as opposed to support.
No, I'm sorry, you cannot.
You know, it's it's unfortunate that you claim you didn't get the notice. We can we can tell. We can tell you that we follow the the requirement of the city code and mailed notices as required. If you didn't get it, talk to the post office.
Now, wait a minute here. I'm I'm saying that I got the letter about this meeting. I'm saying your community meetings that you had.
Again, if they were put in the mail, you didn't get it.
Okay, well, I'm just I'm just saying, that's where I'm coming from. I mean, this is a great plan, guys, but you're still too big. That's my that's my big problem. I got some more questions here.
I'm sorry, you cannot ask any questions from the galley. Deputy Chief, I'm going to ask you to clear anybody who speaks up next out of order.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, this is probably going to staff. One of the people listed out a bunch of codes that were violated. Do we know about those? Are we good on those? I was just questioning that. I don't know what codes, because she was rambling them off pretty quick, and I couldn't tell you what they were. So I I want to know if we're violating codes right now.
Staff, I'm going to let you hold that. We do have our next section where we can address questions to you and and give you the time to look things up. So. Any other questions to the applicants?
Okay, the applicants. When did you take the business part out, like you had last time?
Okay, so that was, and this may be a question also for the city, to be quite honest, because it has to do with Missouri state law and a city ordinance that passed. But we, because of the city ordinance that passed, we removed that. So I would say maybe four months ago, five months ago.
Okay, I just question. I remember last time you guys were talking about small businesses and stuff like that.
Right.
That's why I brought that up.
So, yeah.
Chairman Nesbitt, you may have missed that meeting. We addressed that new state law, and that's why it changed.
No, I was here, but I didn't know why they took.
Yeah. Any other questions from any other commissioners for our applicants to clear up? All right, thank you. Any other questions or concerns for the staff? Chairman O'Neill?
Yes. I have a question. We're talking about an overlay here, not a rezone. Is that correct?
Talking about that.
Well, in order to put in place the overlay, you do have to follow the rezoning process. You have to rezone to put the overlay, whoops, the overlay on top of the base zoning, so it is a rezoning.
Well, we're not changing the basic zone.
That is correct.
We're only overlaying on top of that.
Correct. So so properties that are zoned R-12, which most of these properties are zoned R-12, stay R-12. They just have the base or the overlay overlaid on top of them, which then allows them the additional rights to have ADUs and these cluster cottage clusters.
So in fact, we're not we're not adding additional restrictions. We're actually giving them a benefit or a greater choice.
That is correct, yes.
Any other questions for staff?
Madam Chair.
Yes.
There was a question from, I don't know, somebody that was asking, who oversees the the overlay district? Is that you folks or somebody else?
Correct. Anything that gets added to the UDO, Unified Development Ordinance, it is staff's duty to enforce that as building permits are applied for or development applications come come in. It's city staff that is going to be enforcing the overlay district, making sure that those go through the appropriate process. You know, if it's somebody that's building an ADU in in their backyard or somebody who's building a detached garage or or a cottage cluster, there's different processes for for all of those, and it's up to city staff to advise those those applicants of what that process is and run that through those appropriate processes.
So who? Why? Why was this method chosen? Why was an overlay district? What's the what are the advantages of having an overlay district?
So one of the advantages is is you you can still keep the base zoning district, but the overlay district also allows you to supplement those regulations of the base zoning district. So as I mentioned, most of this property is owned R-12. Most of the the R the R-12 regulations are still going to apply. Somebody who's going to build a garage in their backyard, those those regulations are still going to apply. This supplements those and would allow for an accessory dwelling unit to be built in one of these backyards if it is appropriate, if they can meet the setbacks, if they can meet the parking, if they can meet all of the regulations that are outlined in the overlay district. So that is the reason why, that is one of the reasons why, as well as we we have a number of plans and studies that have been done over the year that have that have looked at ways to revitalize and encourage infill housing in some of these older neighborhoods. These is these these neighborhoods, as I mentioned, most of them, most of the homes in this area were planted in the 1950s or before. And so with those with those plans and with those studies that have been done, that is along with the other reasons that I mentioned for the the overlay, that is the reason why we worked with Inglewood to develop the overlay district.
So Inglewood came to the city wanting to do something.
Correct.
And the city planning staff suggested that this would be a way to do that.
We had to take their their vision, their idea, and conform it to the form that's the UDO.
Because otherwise, you'd have to rewrite the UDO to accommodate.
Correct.
All this, and so this was easier? Or what? What's the? I'm not criticizing. I just want to know what the why.
Again, because it it still leaves the the base zoning intact, plus going all the way back to our 93 comprehensive plan. It was talking about revitalizing neighborhoods and using different strategies, flexible zoning, overlay districts, to meet to try to accomplish those those goals of revitalizing these these neighborhoods.
Okay, so if somebody wants to do a home business, whether it's in the larger unit or the smaller ADU, they still have to come before who to get that approved?
So with our our recent change to home-based businesses, and these these regulations apply citywide, state statute defines the home-based businesses into two two categories, no impact and which has a certain set of rules. And then there's home-based businesses that the city can enforce limited or enforce our rules, federal, state, local regulations to regulate those home-based businesses. Rip, if anything to add.
I would just add, if you recall, we did have that discussion a few meetings back. It did get passed by council. It was part of that House Bill 1662 that was adopted in 2022, kind of after during that pandemic period where they were looking at opportunities to make sure people with home-based businesses had an ability to do that without having to go through extra types of regulations. So this, whether it's in this overlay, whether there is an overlay or not, that would still follow through for the entire city. So this doesn't change any of that.
Sure, I'm I know that, but not everybody knows that. So things like that need to be said during the meeting. So that's why I'm asking the question. So when people are concerned about a business starting up in an ADU, then they also would need to know that you're going to take into account the parking situation along the street, correct?
That is correct, yeah. Yeah, for both criteria, whether it's an ADU, as in this proposed code, it does require an off-street parking to be able to handle that, as well as the the code that was recently adopted with the home-based businesses. Their no-impact can't have an impact on traffic.
And how many other communities in Missouri have done this?
So from what we can tell, there's approximately 22, maybe more, within Missouri and Kansas that have done this. Locally, I can tell you, you know, Grandview, Belton, Kansas City, Missouri, Jackson County, Harrisonville, Parkville, Raymore, they all have some form of ADU ordinance. Belton, for example, is citywide. Kansas City, the same. Grandview has a very large area in proportion to their city that is similar, that has similar regulations to what's being proposed here. Some of those were adopted in like in 2021, some 2022. As we did our research, we look further back into some cities in parts of the country that have done this, you know, before. You can look for places like Seattle. You can look for places like Florida, as well as California. I think in Florida, they started doing this back in the late 80s. So it's not a new concept, as I think it's been brought up here today. And it's a new concept or independence, but it's not a new concept nationwide.
Some of these communities have also passed their ordinance, but with a sunset clause, so that they can reevaluate it later on. Was that ever considered?
Of the 22 local communities that we that we looked at, we did not see a sunset provision of ADUs.
Well, I just spent a little time on the internet, and there was one from Columbia, I think in 2022, that was. It passed, at least it looks like that to me, unless it was later rescinded.
So the the information that that we were looking at was within the Mid-America Regional Council region. So that covers the nine the nine-county region that makes up Kansas City. Within that, there's there's 22 local and county ordinances that address ADUs. There's others throughout the state of Missouri that that have them. We did not look at at those, though.
So you didn't consider that, is what you're what you're saying?
We did not research, though, yes.
That's something that could be considered. There would no be no reason why it's not illegal to do that.
My only caution on the on the sunset provision that you brought up is what happens after it sunsets and you have these ADUs out there?
Well, that's not my problem.
We have to we have to enforce that, so.
What I mean is event, sunset is set in place for there to be another meeting and to then you'd have some evidence on whether it's working. You'd have some evidence on maybe this is a problem or that is a problem, instead of setting something in place in perpetuity. So.
Keep in mind that the UDO is a is a living document. We've had 69 amendments to it in 15 years, so that's a little over four four amendments a year. So it's a living, breathing document. It's meant to be used. It's meant to be changed, because it's supposed to, you know, it's supposed to adapt with with the times, with changes. And so that's what we strive to to do with our UDO.
So what you're saying is you don't necessarily need a sunset clause, but how would somebody besides you guys understand where the problems are? And can we count on you guys to initiate any changes?
So a lot of the changes recently have been initiated by by staff. It's it's things that that we see. Some of those changes have come from conversations with the Planning Commission. I know that parking and for apartments was a big issue for the Planning Commission. We researched that. We made changes to to do that. We made changes to payday loans, pawn shops, used car lots, car washes, all those things. So we hear from these planning commission meetings what's going on, and we when we research those and we adjust where where we. and we, when we research those and we, uh, adjust where where we need to adjust.
Well, thank you for saying that, because again, not everybody knows that that's what happens. So, uh, I don't think I have any more questions at the moment.
Chair.
Chair. Yes, go ahead.
I just had two quick, hopefully quick things. I'm assuming that you didn't do a complete look over all the properties in the affected area, the thirty-five, thirty-seven-hundred properties that are affected, and how many of them would actually be able to, um, add an A D U should they choose to, based upon lot size and location of the home and all that sort of thing?
We did not, that that would be a a big undertaking, uh, but also keep in mind, uh, the U D O c- currently allows for detached garages. Uh, there's setbacks and other per- parameters that have to be met with those, and we have, uh, over sixty thousand parcels within the city, and and we did not do that level of research when we adjusted those. So again, like you said, uh, within this a- area, are all of these properties viable for an accessory dwelling unit? I would say no, they're not.
Do you have a ballpark percentage?
What percentage? We couldn't even fathom a a guess, but knowing that, uh, majority of these lots are fifty feet wide, in some cases, we have some subdivisions going back to, uh, the early nineteen twenties and their forty-foot-wide lots. However, things have changed, homes have come down, uh, some property owners acquired two lots, some acquired three lots, um, so it's variable, but it's, and it's too hard to even put a percentage on of which ones are viable to put a A D U on. If you happen to have a a larger lot and it's configured right, it it may work out.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Chair.
Yes.
Okay, back to my first question. Are we, any problems with the code? Are we violating codes that was mentioned? Do you know?
No, so so there was a, uh, section that was mentioned, fourteen seven oh five dash thirteen. That applies only to a final site plan application. In this case, we have a rezoning application, and so that that section is not going to apply.
Okay, what about the other two she mentioned?
One was on.
I didn't write it.
Yeah, one was on the, I I tried to scribble the numbers quickly. One was on the documents changing throughout the time period and the requirements for communicating and having those documents available, and also overall the communication, um, requirement, so the hundred and eighty-five feet versus the thirty-seven-hundred that were approached.
Sure, so I I think you you heard from several, uh, people who spoke tonight that, uh, they did not receive the notice until August fifth or sixth, which is more than the fifteen days, which is what the state statute requires as the minimum notice to affected property owners. And that includes both the thirty-seven-hundred-plus inside, as well as the close to three hundred and fifty property owners within the hundred and eight eighty-five feet. Uh, staff also went out on August fifth and six and posted the signs. Uh, these were the large signs, so they were about the three-by-five-foot signs, and we tried to write as big as we possibly could, but we put, uh, over two dozen of those out at key intersections due to, um, at the periphery of the rezoning. As far as the changing documents, as Ms. Dorsh, uh, had mentioned, there were a lot of changes, massages, um, uh, it was mentioned about the home-based businesses, and that change was was made, uh, about four months ago. So it has changed over over the course of, uh, this this project. Uh, Inglewood has done, has done their best to try to get the information out, as far as communicating that to, uh, communicating the changes to the, uh, different property owners. Uh, there's there's nothing in the state statute or city code that, uh, dictates a timeline in which that has to to take place.
Okay, uh, one other question here, thinking, on special use permits, could A D Us be used in special use permits?
So, um, you mean within the current code right now?
Correct.
No, the way that we have have handled that is is property owner needs to come forward and rezone the property. Uh, in order to do that, they also would have to subdivide the property to separate the two structures that are on there. In addition, uh, that, I'll call it the second home, has to meet the U D O standards, which is, uh, for a single-story house, a minimum of nine hundred s- square feet. If you're, uh, multi-story, the minimum of square feet is eleven hundred square feet. So, uh, they could do something similar, just not exactly.
But it is possible, then?
It is possible, but there's several different hoops to to jump through. Uh, as I mentioned, the rezoning process, the plating process. The plating is 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 not an inexpensive endeavor.
They wouldn't have to do that now, they, if we put this code in?
No.
They wouldn't have to platter or nothing? Oh, okay, uh, that didn't bother me there, but, okay. So my next question is gonna be, if this passes, how does a neighbor know if somebody's gonna put a U D, U D, U D, whatever? A D U in there? Is there any way they're gonna know that, or is, I mean, since it doesn't sound like they need to send out notices?
So there is no no notification, much like there's no notification if your neighbor puts in a detached garage right now. Uh, that's why we have different setbacks and things like like that, uh, to keep those those separation. But to get back to your question, yeah, there's no notification, and there's nothing within the the overlay that that mentions a notification to the surrounding property owners.
I would add to that, too, that it would be fairly similar if somebody wanted to come forward and do an expansion of their house, build a sunroom, or finish their basement or add a bathroom or something like that. It would be the same, uh, there's no notification process required when somebody wants to do that with their house currently.
Staff, there were two other, uh, major questions, if you could address some. One, again, kind of go over the utilities, um, and if there is infrastructure to those A D Us and how that would be determined?
Yeah, so in 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 conversation with the director of I P L, he said there's absolutely no concern from I P L from a, uh, capacity per- perspective to accommodate, uh, the potential for these these A D Us. Now, keep in mind, uh, the city, city staff review on a daily basis numerous, uh, construction per- permits, people who are, um, adding on to their house, doing, uh, detached garages, those types of of things. Those get reviewed by, uh, staff from several different departments to ensure that we have enough water, uh, they're not building over an easement, there's, uh, enough power there. Uh, all of those those things get thoroughly re- reviewed as part of that building permit. These A D Us, if the the overlay district was in place, they would receive that same level of, uh, review that any other permit does.
And then the final question was, can you reiterate the parking requirements with the A D U?
Yeah, so the the overlay district requires, uh, one parking space for the the A D U. Again, it goes goes back to not every lot in this, uh, overlay district may be viable for a A D U because of, you know, they may have enough space, but where are they gonna put the parking? They have to figure out the off-street parking.
Right.
One other question that somebody brought up, historical district. Does this affect anything on that? Cause I mean, she was pretty, I mean, in case that house may be sold, it's a historic house, could they put a A D U behind it then?
So we only have one local historic district, that is the Truman District, which is at at Truman in Delaware. That's the only local district. Outside of that, we have, um, upwards of twenty to to thirty individually listed properties. I did not see her property on that list. It may be be off there, but as 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 far as that, uh, if there is a local, uh, landmark district on that property, the Heritage Commission is gonna have to weigh in on on that, uh, before any type of construction took place.
Okay, so I think that's what she was more worried about, something like that. Okay, thanks.
Chair.
Yes, go ahead.
We talked earlier about the, if you, you have to live on the property, one of the two buildings or what have you.
Correct.
But when someone sells, if they sell it to a business, what happens? A big corporation?
So one of the, one of the things that that communities have implemented, and we would do the same same thing, that if a if an A D U is constructed on a on a property, uh, they have recorded on that property, um, a, uh, not a D, but a, but affidavit, thank you, an affidavit that talks about they're they're living in that property and they cannot sell the property, s- those, to the A D U and the house separately. So that gets recorded on the property, and that's, uh, a best practice that we saw from communities, um, outside of Missouri.
Sure, but if, so, uh, so let's say I built one on mine, and I decided to sell to a big corporation in five years. Can that, does that corporation then have to move in to it? Are they, are they gonna still gonna be held with the same standards? And how are you guys gonna manage that? Who's, who I sell my house to, in my, including my A D U? Cause all of a sudden, you could have twenty of these pop up, and then twenty of them get sold to a big corporation, and that big corporation now owns twenty of these with sub-houses on them, A D Us on them, and nobody's living in them that actually owns the property, unless the city's prepared to try to manage who can and cannot buy these homes in the future. And I, I just, I'm curious, are you guys prepared to manage that?
If if that were to occur, that would become enforcement that the city would have to take on that, on that property owner. So if it if it was a out-of-town in- investor, um, the city would follow up to to, uh, get that into compliance. If not, there's, um, legal actions that the city could could take. If we did have a situation like that, we would, uh, work, of course, with our city attorney to make sure that, uh, whatever actions we we took, um, have, were on solid legal ground and, uh, were appropriate for, uh, what was taking place.
Well, I guess ultimately I could be restricted as to who I could sell my house to, so I could li- end up limiting how many people I could sell my house to, in theory. Cause if you guys made it legal that they had to have to live on the property, there's gonna be fewer people that are gonna will be willing to buy my property at the same time. Would you say that's true?
I really wanna say it would it would limit it. Um, a lot, a lot of these these out-of-town in- investors, they, uh, would approach property owners seeking to pay cash for their for their property. So so if you were to, uh, decide to put it up for for sale through Zillow or Realtor, you'd still probably get the, um, individual buyer to, uh, purchase your property. Again, kind of going down, um, a lot of what ifs.
Yeah, yeah, just going off of what's been going on a lot lately, these corp- corporations coming and buying homes in a lot of areas.
A lot of that was 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 due when when interest rates were extremely low and they had a lot of money to try to eke out, uh, returns for their investors.
So. So, like Tom, you said, um, like, uh, it has to be a bed and breakfast type business. It couldn't be a short-term rental type business.
That is correct, so within the the A D U, a short-term rental would not would not be allowed. Um, we have, I think it's, uh, six existing short-term rentals within this area. If a, one of those property owners wanted wanted to take advantage of the A D U, that short-term rental would have to convert back to a single-family residence and for homeownership in order to do the 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 A D U. So in that way, you're you're getting some of the investors out of the neighborhoods and putting the the properties back into the hands of, uh, homeowners.
So if, and I don't know that this is the case, but do you actually have a pretty strict definition of what a bed and breakfast is? Because if there was a corporation that ran a bed and breakfast business, they could buy the property, they could, uh, put it in the name of somebody that works for them as the owner and then use that building as a bed and breakfast. And maybe that's fine, but I just, you gotta, you know, you can't be too careful. I'm asking you.
Yes, part part of the, uh, requirement to be a bed and breakfast is the owner has to reside in either the either the house.
Do you see in my situation that the owner actually works for the business?
Yes.
So, uh, the, a bed and breakfast wouldn't be allowed to advertise like a short-term rental would, right? So.
No, bed and breakfast can can.
Yeah.
Advertise on those different platforms that that short-term rentals do.
So that would be, that would be okay?
Correct.
Okay, now, my other question is, I stay up at night and try to think of these sometimes. So, uh, what is the relationship? Like, if if, like, a lady owns a house, she's a widower, and she decides that she wants the smaller house, but she wants to give the, have her son or her son's family move into the bigger house?
That's fine.
That's fine.
I know that's fine, but what's, this property is still all one property, right? It's not separated out.
Correct, yes.
So the relationship is that she's the owner and they're a renter?
Or whatever the arrangement is, yes, that that is correct.
It's said in there that it has to be a rental-ready.
Yes, if it if it is rented out, meaning they are a landlord and they are collecting rent, then they must, uh, comply with the rental-ready, which includes the, um, inspections every other, every other year.
But if she's just saying, okay, you can stay there because I need somebody to watch over me, then that's okay?
Correct, and and we have a lot of situations where, um, within a single-family home, we have a multi-generational situation. Uh, in our mind, that is no no different. They would, they would go, I'm mom, here's my daughter, son-in-law. We're all the same. We go, okay, you're not, you're not a rental, you don't have to comply with the rental-ready.
Okay, thank you.
Before I close the hearing, any other questions from commissioners? All right. This hearing is closed. Commissioners, let's discuss.
Okay, we got, uh, what's this other piece of paper that they gave us?
This is the amendment.
That's the amendment, so when it comes forward as a motion, we'll add that amendment. We'll make, we'll make a motion to add that amendment into the U D O, number seventy. Yes.
I would like to make a motion to approve case number twenty-four one hundred dash twenty-one, rezoning for Inglewood Arts Overlay District.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
Could we, um, we have to consider these separately, but we need to consider the U D O amendment first.
Okay, great.
What do you say?
The U D O amendment is the one that requires your amendment with the new recommendation.
That is correct, yes.
All right, that would be the separate handout that is in front of you?
Tom, tell us again what it's doing.
Absolutely. So as was mentioned, there were several iterations of the UDO Overlay District as it was being formed. An earlier version, the version that the planning commission saw when we sent it out, prohibited heavy equipment sales rental, prohibited motor vehicle repair, and prohibited vehicle sales. As the planning commission will remember, last November, or late last year, the planning commission had recommended, after consideration, changes that we made to all things automotive. We increased the standards in regards to these uses. Thus, the prohibited is no longer necessary, and they just need to follow...fall back on the base zoning for the office and commercial districts. And what was discussed was, these uses are allowed in...they are conditional uses in the C2 and C3 districts. So this amendment would just change it back to, if the overlay district is put in place, that it just falls back to the base zoning district.
So we're removing a prohibition from it?
Yes, that's a much easier way to say it.
Madam Chair.
Yes, Commissioner.
I withdraw my motion.
Thank you. All right. So do we need to vote on the amendment first to add it to the UDO?
Yes, we would need first and second for the amendment.
What he said.
Okay, great. Thank you, Counselor, or Assistant Director. Do I have a motion to add the amendment to UDO number 70?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All right. Please take the vote.
Commissioner Ferguson.
No.
Commissioner Nesbit.
No.
Commissioner O'Neil.
Yes.
Commissioner Torres.
Yes.
Commissioner Young.
Nope.
Commissioner Ashbaugh.
Yes.
Commissioner Wiley.
Yes. The motion passes four to three, so now we will vote on UDO number 70. I'll entertain a motion to that case with the amended added. So case number 24-175-07, UDO amendment number 70. I have a first, do I have a second?
Second.
All right. Motion's been seconded. Can we have a vote on...
Well, I'd like to speak to it before I give my vote. Okay.
Yes, do you want to do that before?
Well, we used to do that back in the day.
Go for it.
So I...overall, I think this is not a bad thing. I think that not many people will probably take advantage of it, and I'm hoping the city will be diligent in their overseeing of this. I wish you had more people to oversee what's going on in our city.
They do, too.
But at the same time, the community shouldn't be afraid to speak up and say they see something and they want it to be looked at. So we all gotta kind of work together. The Inglewood Overlay District folks, I think they had all good intentions. I know they put a lot of work into this. I am still a little disappointed that they probably should have put more work into it. It might have been a futile attempt, I don't know. But people maybe should have gone the extra mile to notify some of these folks, because, let's face it, there's a distrust of government nowadays. And I know you, I know you guys, but not everybody does. And I think we all need to work together. So I just want to say that because even though I have some misgivings, I will be voting in favor, because I think overall it would give some people the opportunity, and hopefully they're good people, that will do this.
Chair.
Yes.
I'd like to say something.
Sure.
I agree with a lot of what he said. My biggest problem is, I don't know why staff didn't even get involved to make it smaller, to start it out smaller. It could go bigger. I mean, I know we made that recommendation a year ago, it still didn't go small. I mean, we're still big. That's the reason why I'm so upset about it, because it's way too big. It's...and we have no way of controlling, I'm sorry. The staff does cannot control this. I mean, they can't control most of the city code stuff that gets violated around them. So I'm just saying that I'm disappointed on the size of it. That's the biggest thing. My biggest problem is the size of it. I mean, yes, they did not do their communication out like they're supposed to, but, I mean, we gotta live with it. So that's my point.
Chair.
Yes, sir.
I know I'm new to the committee, the commission, and I just wanted to point out something that stands out as stark to me, being new. I know there's a lot of people in the area, because not only do I live in the area, but also have business in the area, and I know that there's a lot of people that hadn't heard about it, a lot of people hadn't heard about what's going on. And when you can get 34 people to stand up here tonight, who many hadn't heard about it in the community, out of 3,400 homes, you get 34 to stand up and say, this is a problem? Because I haven't been told, I don't understand, I want more information. And you get 15 people who have been doing this for years, trying to move this along. You get 15 people to come speak. To me, that's a deafening response to this community, and as commissioners, we're supposed to be speaking for somewhat the community, the people. And if we're not, then we're in the wrong seats. That's all I have to say.
Right, I'm gonna call the vote.
Commissioner Ferguson.
No.
Commissioner Nesbit.
No.
Commissioner O'Neil.
Yes.
Commissioner Torres.
Yes.
Commissioner Young.
No.
Commissioner Ashbaugh.
Yes.
Commissioner Wiley.
Yes. The motion passes four to three. We do have another motion, so please...
Madam Chair.
Yes.
I move that we approve case number 24-100-21, rezoning Inglewood Overlay District.
A second.
We have a motion and a second. I've been asked to read. So case number 24-100-21, please. Rezoning Inglewood Arts Overlay District. The city proposes a creation of the Inglewood Arts Overlay District, bound by Truman Road on the north, Chrysler Avenue, Lexington Avenue, Walnut Street, and Chrysler Avenue on the east, 23rd Street on the south, Arlington Avenue, 20th Street, Crescent Avenue, 18th Street, and Brookside Avenue on the west. So this is actually proposing the area itself. So we have a first and a second, and the vote.
Madam Chair. I have a question. So what if I vote no now? Do they have to go back and redefine the size of the...
So if the rezoning motion fails, then the...this still goes on to city council. So the planning commission is a recommending body to the city council. It will be considered by them in October. First reading's October 7th, second reading and consideration is October 21st. So the planning commission's just a recommending body. So keep in mind, there's a whole other step in which these two applications have to proceed.
Okay, thank you.
All right, I'll call the motion. Call the vote.
Commissioner Ferguson.
No.
Commissioner Nesbit.
No.
Commissioner O'Neil.
Yes.
Commissioner Torres.
Yes.
Commissioner Young.
No.
Commissioner Ashbaugh.
No.
Commissioner Wiley.
Yes. Motion fails four to three. All right, I want to thank everybody for staying. I want you now to give yourself a hand for your...just being here and speaking for your community. Thank our city employees. Thank you. Anything for the roundtable that we need to know for the next meeting?
It'll be a large meeting. I think we'll have about nine cases, but other than that...
Nine cases. All right. All right. Thank you. Thank you for your time and attention, Miranda. Or Melinda, Melinda. Miranda, I did say it right. All right.
I know I did.
We are out.